I didn't say to order yet.
Just queued up.
I want to call this meeting.
All right.
What are we going to call it?
That's what we're going to call it. Five minutes late.
There you go.
All right. I'd like to call this meeting of the Litchfield School District to order. And would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is review and revision of the agenda and then into the school board reorganization. And I'm going to make one slight change and move our recognition of the CHS Robotics Team 3323 ahead of that reorganization because you folks may find it more interesting than the other part of the school board meeting. So, quick summary. I was fortunate enough, first week of March, to make it to at least part of the robotics team's competition in Nashua. Team 3233, Potential Energy, competed in the New England Granite State District Event. They were one of thirty-nine teams involved. All six New England states were represented in the competition. Following the round robin portion of the competition, the top, I believe it was eight teams, selected alliances who have groups of three that then compete as teammates against the other seven sets of alliances. CHS was selected as part of an alliance with South Winder High School, Connecticut, and Sauhegan High School from New Hampshire. They then competed in three quarterfinal matches and their alliance outscored the opposition three hundred and eighty-two to two eighty-six. That's a ton of points to score in that many matches. So, advancing to the semifinals where they outscored the opposition overall three hundred and seventy-two to one hundred and fifty. And then in three final matches, outscored the opposition four hundred and sixty to two seventy-nine. It's pretty incredible numbers and interesting as the competition got more difficult, your numbers just kept getting better and better. Robotics is a tremendous team in individual accomplishment. This team has been working for a while. I think we've got a pretty young group this year in a lot of ways, but we also have some folks who've been with it for a while and some wonderful leadership. Mr. Childs has been with the group for how many years now?
Two years.
And I have to say, sitting and watching the group work, I've seen some robotics teams which are really teacher and adult-driven, and this group did not come across that way at all. You know, this was run by the students, the design, the decisions, the management. It truly was a treat to see them work and try and salvage after they burned out a motor in one of their competitions, one of the matches. And Jacob, you guys got it back up and running? And so when he came and sat down up in the stands next to me, a little bit tired, I think, from working the furnaces the night before, if I recall. And my question was, how does it look? And he said, "I think it'll hold." And I said, "Good. A lot of really good things have happened." And some not-so-good things have happened after that statement has been uttered. But it held and they went on to do well and do some great things. So, I am going to give Marcus his award as team captain. And then, so I won't mess up people's names quite as badly. We're going to get Marcus to give out all of the others. So, from the school district to the robotics team, congratulations. The next week, the team went on and finished to the quarterfinals at UNH. Are waiting to hear about an invite.
To the regional event.
The regional event. They have been fundraising very hard. They're also in need of some assistance if they are to go. The bus costs itself will run about.
Two thousand dollars.
Which would be a really nice bonus if they could find some five nice people somewhere who might be able to find that money to support them.
Yes, that would be great.
Maybe that will happen at some point in time. Anyways, congratulations and drive well down.
And this is only about half the team. Only about half the team. Half the mothers as well.
All yours.
Okay, so first we have Kendra Seifers.
We have Austin Snell. Noah Schreiber is not here. Sean Savard, also not here. Andrew Ryan, also not here. Max Rothker. Mark McClure is not here. Matt Lepore is here. Mike Hood? No?
No, nobody.
Harrison's here. This is two. If anyone else has two, should give them back. David Gelfern is also not here. Neither is Adrien Fekiti. Heather Estill is here. Jack Curtin, not here. Rachel Craig, not here. Madison Corbeal. Alex Corbeal. Nate Clark is not here. Am Chapine is here. Jeffrey Briggs is here. Evan Bacon is not here. Jeffrey Vittable is not here. And that is all. Thank you all. I miss it. I don't have it.
Everybody got two.
I don't have it.
Sure.
These two together, so it's quite possible I'm missing one.
Oh.
I know, I signed her.
No, no, go over there.
Let's do superintendent, maybe it's a bigger deal.
Jacob McQueston.
That's my fault.
That guy's a senior.
Cameron and Christian are missing.
Cameron Christian?
Cameron and Christian are missing.
We've got to stick.
Can you all give a good check, make sure none of you are doubled up?
We have twenty-eight, so we have twenty-eight.
We are missing any of them.
You have two rest.
Yeah, this is kind of up here.
I printed them.
Christian LaFleur.
Cameron is.
Assuming he's in the S's, because that makes sense, but. Here, you can look through that. I'm looking at S's again.
He's put in numbers, not letters, right?
Cameron Schmidt.
Cameron Schmidt.
Cameron Schmidt. Everyone out. Yes.
There you go. That's good.
Now, given, I'm assuming this is a smart group, you should probably exit now.
This is all of us.
Thank you. Wasn't any better.
Come back again.
Come back with me again.
Where do you go if you do good in Boston?
St. Louis.
St. Louis?
Yes.
That's a little bit bigger though.
Long a bus ride.
St. Louis on the school bus.
They've got a leave on Sunday for a competition on Saturday, right?
Bigger grant. I think it would be cheaper for them to fly than to take the bus.
We do have two other groups sort of in the queue for recognition. One would be the girls' basketball team, state champions. And the other would be Emily. Thor, who you probably saw work of Emily's at the event in the gym. Emily just found out this week that she was a national winner of a silver award for her painting, "We Are Beautiful." So she was one of twenty-two New Hampshire artists, professional artists, who won National Scholastic Art Awards. So, I have asked Ms. Freeman to contact her and see when she would be available in the next couple of meetings, so that's kind of what we have to look forward to. All right. School board reorganization. We have the welcome of new member or members, in this case, Janine Lepore. Technology working and everything?
It's a bit tiring, but it's okay. Thank you, it's good to be here.
And now we move on to school board nominations.
So I'd like to move the theme of Dennis Miller as chair and Brian Bork as vice chair.
Well, I think we have to do it as position at a time. So we do chair first. So nomination for chair.
Dennis Miller.
Dennis Miller. We have a second.
Second?
Second by Mr. Bork. Any other nominations?
This isn't a Robert's Rules of Order, so I don't have to say that three times, do I?
No other nominations? Saying none, we should probably take a vote.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstaining.
Abstaining. Elected as board chair, four zero one.
You never vote for yourself.
Mr. Miller. And I believe Mr. Miller, now that we have a board chair, I get to be quiet for a while and you get to come up to me and conduct the rest of this.
Dr. Cochran, I don't know that that has happened at any meeting we've had, but we welcome the opportunity.
We welcome the opportunity.
Well, now that we have a chair.
Get your little name taken.
Oh, yeah. Maybe you'll do a better job than I do, keeping him quiet.
And that paper is yours too.
The former superintendent used to occasionally read over and say, "I apologize, I realize it's your meeting." I see what he was doing. He was smarter than I. He said, "We both got mine, and I don't have to take it."
I have a pen here somewhere.
Yeah, maybe that. Is the other one too?
You want to give it to the vice chair?
Oh, I thought you were giving me the.
Giving you one, giving one to the vice chair.
To read.
Is there a spare pen on there?
No, Code of Ethics comes next. Yes, I do.
Is that yours?
Yeah, and I don't need the power, but I do need the mouse. Thank you.
I have it in my notes. Just there. As soon as possible.
As soon as possible. So we'll let Derek plug in and then we'll open the floor for nominations for vice chair, which I think we know we're going to get one.
I'll move Brian Bork for vice chair.
Any other nominations?
Derek Barka likes chair.
Okay, since we have multiple nominations, we take them in the order, oh, I should say. Any other nominations? I shouldn't assume there's only two. Okay, we'll take them in the order in which they came. Is there a second for Mr. Bork?
Do you need a second?
Actually, I don't know that we do for nominations. I think we just vote.
No, I think you just vote.
Okay. All those in favor of Mr. Bork, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nobody else abstaining, because if everybody abstains, it's a one oh.
I'm abstaining.
You're abstaining?
Yes.
Opposed?
Abstaining.
Fails one one two?
One one two.
No, that's not right.
Well, we've got maximum votes.
One one three.
One one three.
One one three. All those in favor of Mr. Barka, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Abstaining? Vote fails two two one. So we're going to go nowhere fast, apparently. We'll come back around for Mr. Bork. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
You're allowed to vote for yourself.
I am.
Yep.
Abstaining.
I'm going to abstain. So it will be Mr. Bork, two one two for vice chair, if I counted correctly. Yes. You have the, you know that means you do the evaluation, right? Okay. Michelle, do you want me to pass the vice chair duties down?
Yes.
This goes to the vice chair. Thank you.
And let us hear the two things and the signature pages.
Oh, yes.
Like my pen back?
So we typically read at the reorganizational meeting, the Code of Ethics and have the board members sign it, and the Code of Conduct and have the board members sign it. So first up is policy BCA, which is the Code of Ethics. The Litchfield School Board believes that the primary responsibility of its members must be the educational welfare of the students attending the Litchfield Public Schools and to implement the educational interest of the community. The Litchfield School Board shall adopt these ethical statements and publicly commit themselves collectively and individually to the following. I shall attend all regularly scheduled board meetings insofar as possible and become informed concerning the issues to be considered at those meetings. Display and demonstrate courtesy and decorum toward fellow board members and at all public meetings and in all public statements. Support the superintendent and help him, her, or her to be as effective as possible. I guess I should have just said him. My apologies. Make policy decisions only after full discussion at publicly held board meetings. Render all decisions based on the available facts and personal judgment. Not attempt to exercise authority as an individual and will not make unauthorized commitments on behalf of the board. Disclose any conflict of interest and abstain from voting on an issue if appropriate. Refrain from using my board position for personal or partisan gain. Respect the confidentiality of information disclosed in executive sessions of the board. Consistently support what is best for the total school district. Support all board decisions and assist in carrying them out effectively. Support the right and obligation of teachers to teach the approved curriculum. If any board member feels that another board member has violated any provision of this agreement, that board member shall personally talk with the offending board member in an attempt to resolve the issue. If the attempt fails, the board member who feels that another board member has violated this agreement shall bring the matter to the attention of the entire board. And it was last revised on April seventh of 2010. So, oops. Wrote too hard. That's it. And while that goes around. BCAA, which is School Board Conduct. The Litchfield School Board shall adopt the following conduct statement, and annually each member shall read, review, and sign a copy of this statement to indicate their agreement. Our collective goal is to make educational decisions in the best interest of our students. As a member of the Litchfield School Board, I shall strive to improve public education and to that end, I shall remember always that my first and greatest concern must be the educational welfare of the students attending the public schools. Not surprise other board members or district staff in public or engage in personal attacks. Listen carefully and with courtesy when other people have the floor and are speaking during board meetings. Maintain open communications with the superintendent of schools. Delegate executive functions to the superintendent and confine board action to policymaking, planning, and appraisal. Maintain a balance between fiscal responsibility and a commitment to quality education. Not speak outside of board meetings against any majority decision which was reached in good faith, nor take any private action that undermines board decisions. Explain how important it is to follow a proper chain of command at the district and board level if contacted by a parent or other citizen about a school problem. If any board member feels that another board member has violated any provision of this agreement, that board member shall personally talk with the offending board member in an attempt to resolve the issue. If the attempt fails, the board member who feels that another board member has violated this agreement shall bring the matter to the attention of the entire board, which was, and this was last revised on May fifth, 2010. Can I have the blue pen back, Michelle?
You can.
Excuse me, thank you. Any questions or comments on ethics and the Code of Conduct before we progress on? Since Wrestling is here, do you want to move them? I'm sorry. Since I believe Wrestling is here, do we want to bump them forward?
I'm good with that.
Okay. Do you guys board mind if we move Wrestling forward since they're already here? Gentlemen?
Thank you.
Good evening.
Congratulations.
Just as a quick review, I was here back in January requesting for the school district's support for funding for the Campbell High School Wrestling Team, which is now a self-funded program that's, we just finished up our fifth season of being self-funded. I came and we were looking at, or asking for a couple of revenue options to change up our self-funding status, and I was looking to see if there's an update on that.
So I know we had some discussion when you were in last time.
Yes.
It's been four years, five years?
We just finished our fifth season.
Just finished your fifth.
Five years.
And the original agreement we signed was for three.
Three-year agreement to be self-funded for three years, get acclimated, get immersed into the school, prove the worthiness of the program, not from like a talent point of view, but more of, you know, numbers and participation and growth and excitement amongst the student body is how we interpreted it. And we feel we've done that on all levels, probably higher than we could have expected in what we, in five years, you know, even from a year-to-year standpoint. But yes, the agreement was three years.
And the fundraising is a little more challenging. You're competing with.
More groups. I think there's a finite amount of, we believe that there's a finite amount of fundraising dollars out there in our small community, and I think that's just being divvied up into more and more chunks, so each chunk is a little bit smaller. You know, the, this year we didn't, we found fundraising a lot more challenging than we have. I mean, we've seen it incrementally through the four years, but this year was absolutely tougher than last year, which was tougher than the year before. The first year was, you know, maybe with a splash of, hey, we have a wrestling program, a lot more, it drew in a lot more people. Either that emotional tie to people who are former wrestlers aren't there, isn't there like it was the first year, but it's, that's not to discredit anything that's been going on in the program, but it's definitely a trend that we've seen and we can acknowledge.
Okay. I'm assuming that this is not related to a change in the popularity of the program, that in fact the numbers are increasing.
They absolutely are.
It's not a function that fewer people are trying to raise money. It's in fact the other way around. You have.
That's absolutely.
Expanded your programs.
We have. The first year was oh nine, ten, we had about ten wrestlers on the high school team. And this past season, we had about twenty-five wrestlers, and we have about forty youth wrestlers in the hopper behind them, and that's a growing program. That used to be in the twenty-five.
Twenty-two.
Yeah, it used to be twenty, twenty-five kids before, and that one's growing as well. We have, I don't know what the percentage is, but a large percentage of that twenty, of that forty, of those forty kids is in the K two, two, three, four. They're all in the elementary, a lot of them in the elementary school. So it's not a short-term burst that we're trying to, I mean, this is something that we've, you know, we've got a big bubble of kids coming up down, and down at K to two age.
Because everybody can do it. Everybody.
Yeah.
We don't turn anyone away.
We don't, yeah. High school's the same way. We have, we see a lot of need for, it's like an, we see it as an alternate sport where it's, you know, it doesn't matter the gender, it doesn't matter their ability of, and experience in the sport. The coach has wrestled since he was a kid, but he's taken kids who have never wrestled a day in their life and helped them gain confidence. And we've even seen kids with other issues, and I'm not going to get personal or anything, but off mat or out of school issues that we've seen that they've used this as something to help find positives in their lives.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board members?
How many girls are on the wrestling team?
This year there was one, and we had one other two years ago who was the assistant coach's daughter. She was a captain. She wrestled, I think, two or three years. It's not popular with girls because they had, there is not a girls' division, they wrestle boys, but it's open to either, either gender.
We also, I think, had a female on the football team.
I heard that at sports awards night.
So there's a little bit of crossover, you know, it's.
I heard that at the sports awards night.
So are we looking to make a decision on what parts of it we're going to fund? Are we looking just to pull it out of self-funding program altogether? Because I think at a minimum, the school should pick up transportation and coaching because I think that's the majority of their costs, you know, a big part of the chunk of the cost for the team. I would encourage the boosters or friends of wrestling to merge their efforts in with the Booster Club because, you know, I think that if that's all working for all the athletics, I think it helps that process. But if we need a motion to take it out of self-funded and take it, put it under the athletic department, I don't have a problem with that because I think they've more than met the requirement the board put out five years ago.
I would wonder if there would be issues with the partial, I expect that the wrestlers would still fundraise as all the other sports fundraise to offset some of their costs, not nearly to the degree that you have to fully support.
We have, maybe not an immediate need, but we have a very near, on-the-horizon need of a new mat. When the school was built, that mat was here, and it was a used mat and then reconditioned. It's nearing its end of its life, so we feel in the not-too-distant future, we're going to need another one, which is about, for the kind that the coach wants and the size that the coach wants, it's about a fifteen or sixteen thousand dollar purchase. So I believe we're going to be doing still significant fundraising over the next period of years, but it's not so much tied to a specific date where we hope to engage the youth program as well because they make use of the same equipment, and we're going to do a much broader fundraising for that. So we have a specific goal in mind that everyone will, you know, reap from. But we will definitely, we definitely participate with the Booster Club, but we would also look to join forces if we can see fit.
It'll be like a NASCAR mat. It will have ads, business ads all over it.
I somewhat agree with John. My line, I think, goes kind of along the lines of, I don't think we can just take wrestling and completely move it to self-funding just because the voters did vote it down, unfortunately. However, I don't think it's fair, like John said, or you said, that wrestling be hundred percent self-funded while other sports are hundred percent funded. I think we should just take that ten thousand dollar self-fund line in the revenues department and just spread it across all the sports. And the Booster Club of mine with the wrestling club is responsible for, you know, contributing ten thousand dollars towards the revenues. How they choose to do that across all sports is up to them, but, or is athletic director, but I don't know if we can just all of a sudden say, we're going to raise ten thousand dollars with taxpayer money when we already went through a budget process and, you know, people voted on something expecting. I don't think we can change it after the fact, I guess is what I'm saying. We can, we can do what we want, but I don't think it's fair that we do that. But I don't think they should, I don't think they should have to raise ten thousand dollars. I think Campbell High School Sports should have raised ten thousand dollars.
I will remind the board that I haven't seen a budget, so I can't provide an opinion on how much would be coming over, but we are operating on a default budget next year.
Well, that's the concern that I have, and I think the wrestling program is wonderful. I think, I support you in every way, but that worries me that we are on a default budget right now. And my concern is, what are we taking away from if we fund, if we were to fully fund the wrestling program? That concerns me. Is it coming, what are we, what are we giving up?
You're going to hear later on that we're, the process that we're going to take in providing the board with proposed budget, and obviously our start is to plug in ninety-five percent of the budget, which is the salary and benefits, but there will be some priority, prioritizing, if you will, that will need to take place because as we plug all that information in, we have a bottom-line number, we have to make all of that fit into. There's going to need to be some decisions based upon administrative review that we recommend to the board of things, items that were in the recommended budget that will need to come out.
I don't think anything has to be sacrificed, though, because it's already in the budget. Wrestling's in the default budget. It's just whether or not where the revenue comes from. Am I correct?
It's a pure revenue discussion.
and the booster club of mine with, the wrestling club is responsible for, you know, contributing $10,000 towards, towards the revenues. How they choose to do that across all sports is up to them, but, or up to the athletic director, but I don't know if we can just all of a sudden say, we're going to raise $10,000 with taxpayer money, when we already went through a budget process and, you know, people voted on something expecting, maybe, I don't think we can change it after the fact, I guess is what I'm saying. Well, we can, we can do what we want, but I don't think it's fair that we do that. But I don't think they should, I don't think they should have to raise $10,000, I think. Campbell High School sports should have raised $10,000.
I will remind the board that I haven't seen a budget, so I can't provide an opinion on how much would be coming over, but we are operating on a default budget next year.
Well, that's the concern that I have, and I think the wrestling program is wonderful. I think, I support you in every way, but that worries me that we are on a default budget right now, and my concern is, what are we taking away from if we fund, if we were to fully fund the wrestling program? That concerns me. Is it coming, what are we, what are we giving up?
You're going to hear later on that we're, the process that we're going to take in providing the board with a proposed budget, and obviously our start is, is to plug in 95% of the budget, which is the salary and benefits, but there will be some priority, prioritizing, if you will, that will need to take place, because as we plug all that information in, we have a bottom-line number, we have to make all of that fit into. There's going to need to be some decisions based upon administrative review that we recommend to the board of things, items that were in the recommended budget that will need to come out.
I don't think anything has to be sacrificed, though, because it's already in the budget. Wrestling's in the default budget, it's just whether or not where the revenue comes from. Am I correct?
It's a pure revenue discussion.
Yes.
Yeah, it's, it's in the budget.
Yeah.
As an appropriation, but it's not funded. In other words, no money will be spent out of that appropriation if, in fact, the money doesn't equal the revenue provided by the wrestling, friends of wrestling.
Or some.
Or if we make a decision and ask the athletic director to figure it out in his budget.
Correct.
I just have a question. Elizabeth McDonald, 46, Nanicoque Ave. Last year, I realized there was no JV softball. Where did that money go?
There's other, yeah, there are other teams that are.
There was never a JV softball, girls' JV softball team.
JV softball.
And I'm just, that's an example of how things could be moved around, and I'm not talking budgets, I don't do numbers, but there's a chunk that really could have helped them out last year that we didn't have.
I believe girls' JV soccer ball's in the same category.
Was there no JV soccer team?
Last two years.
And that must be a line item somewhere.
What about freshman basketball?
That got cut, coming in, heading into this year, I'm pretty sure.
Is it still funded?
Those sports have not covered.
No, they got cut out of the budget.
Okay, budget, okay.
Okay. I'm just curious where that money goes as a taxpayer in a wrestling room.
So I guess technically it is in the default budget.
We've got to be science.
It's in the default budget as, to affect the bottom line, as a self-funded program.
Not the soccer and basketball programs.
Yep. Yeah, freshman basketball would be there, because it was, it's.
Same as soccer and softball.
But we cut some of that out of next year's budget, but since we got the default budget, you roll back to what the budgeted amounts were.
Right, but again, I'll remind you that that default budget is a number, as you all know. So it's, we now have to take a bigger pie and make it into a smaller piece. So while the calculation, the, well, what you're saying is technically correct, because that would have been used in the calculation of the default budget, it doesn't mean ultimately it's going to end up in the budget that you folks, as a school board, approve.
I agree, but to your point, I still think it's a revenue discussion.
It is a revenue discussion.
Because the money's in the budget.
It's appropriated, but we can only expense it when the revenue equals the expense.
And.
So it is a.
It's just a matter of, it's better trimming in other places.
I believe we have never had less than $50,000 in unanticipated revenue every year, on a yearly basis. So to say that the revenue won't be there because it's not coming from them, I think when we look at our budget and how the revenues are portioned, we always have unanticipated revenue that would more than cover.
I hope that's true this year.
And that actually calms my worries. My worries was just taking this program, those were done and implementing it, but if we're cutting freshman basketball and implementing wrestling, that's a decision.
And those are just, I mean, that's basic, our decision here is whether or not we move it out of self-funded.
Yep, it's a revenue.
And then it's the athletic director and administrator's jobs to figure it out.
To figure out how they spend their money.
I make a motion to move wrestling out of a self-funded program, make it part of the co-curricular activities of Campbell High School.
Is there a second?
A second. Is that with the expectation that it's within the existing athletic budget and not?
Their job to figure it out.
Has to be within their budget.
It's in the budget, because it's in the default budget, so.
Can't overexpend, so.
And if the athletic director comes back and has questions or whatever, that's his budget. He'll need to figure it out and talk with all the different sports programs and work it out.
And I know, well, I know we've seen the athletic budget the last two years as included wrestling, and we've moved it, or the administration, some combination of moved wrestling and those, and ice hockey over to self-funded. So I think the athletic director, I won't speak for him, I think his budget says that he's in support of having that in and sees the value of the.
He submitted it in the last couple of years for us, and he was here voting, as a vote of confidence at the last meeting.
Yeah.
So if I just understand, I just want to make sure I understand what's happening then. So it would be in, it would be in a budget for sports?
It's always in the budget, because you can't expend any money if it's not in the budget, even if it's a self-funded program.
So it's not going to come away from education in any way?
No.
It's just whether we, the revenue comes from the self-funded side or the revenue comes from.
The taxpayers.
Taxpayers or adequate education. I mean, I don't think we get down to $10,000 where it comes from, but it comes out of that collection of revenues that, and we'll review revenues in September, Frank, revenues?
Yes.
Yep.
For the budget year, you know, setting up, so we'll know exactly what.
It really is moving it.
And that sets the tax rate and all those.
From the function code of self-funded up to the co-curricular. And the co-curricular part, and I know this is, at some point, we'll sit down and I'll explain some of this to you, but it's really a function of, the self-funded are just that, they're funded from outside sources that do not flow the general fund. The vote here this evening, you're about to take, will take that from the self-funded category up to the co-curricular category, which is funded through the general fund. Now, where those revenues come from is really what you're voting on tonight, because the budget, the appropriation for wrestling is already in there, it's already slotted, if you will. It's just now, as the chair has mentioned, it's just a question of how we fund it, and that would need to be the determination of the athletic director.
Just to give some perspective, the difference between the budget committee's budget and the default budget was about $174,000, and the last cut that was made was $50,000 to benefits, which, when you see later in the meeting how tight we are in this year's salaries and benefits line, that said, if that's the scope of money that we need to find, and most of what we spend on the salaries and benefits, because we're in the education business, to me, it's not going to be that much different finding that across the entire set and scope of programs, athletic and otherwise, given the amount of money we're talking about. Even with that, it's about a 1%. Now, that 1% has to come from a relatively small piece, but I think in fairness to the quality of the work and the quality of the program, and the fairness of the treatment of all of the folks, I, I just think that we'll have to find a way to make it work.
Can I ask a point of clarification? With that vote, the way John has worded the nomination, are we tied into, so if the way that the athletic director sees fit, if he cuts up the budget the way he sees fit and only sees, you know, opening for $1,000, does that still leave us in the self-funded status for $9,000?
Actually, what it leaves, it leaves it for the athletic director to figure out how to fund all the athletic teams fairly.
I mean, what we're basically saying, while it's a revenue question, we're saying, we're adding, a revenue question, not a wrestling question, a revenue question, we're adding wrestling as a part of the curriculum of Campbell High School, which then, I don't, I don't believe the administration would say, I'm going to give, I'm going to divvy up the money and leave something with $10,000 or with $1,000. They'll make an attempt to look at the budget and portion the money out fairly, and there is distinct line items that Mr. Margulis is going to move up, that give the athletic director some guidance, and my experience is, he's a pretty fair guy, and he's not going to.
And at the same time, you have to realize that as he's going through that process, he has Title IX issues to worry about, and wrestling and being an all-male sport could find themselves still on the shorter side of that, even along with, you know, football and things like that, because they have the largest male population of sports, and you have to fund all the programs equally. So, so that will be the rules that the athletic director has to follow through on that. But, you know, he ought to be able, once we vote, he ought to be able to figure it out in a very short period of time.
It's a co-ed sport.
It's only a co-ed sport if you have coeds.
Just like spirit's a co-ed sport now. You know, they.
Accepting of all.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Just give a second.
Yeah.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Brian.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you for your perseverance.
Thank you very much.
And your service to the students over the last five years. I know starting something new is not easy, and you've built, that's mine, I was going to ask for that. It's not easy to build something up from the ground, and you guys have, you and the people that came before you, because I realize there's been some.
Support from.
I've done a great job.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Takes us to correspondence.
Actually, we never did meet on public minutes.
I didn't, oh, I'm sorry.
We didn't officially assign you.
Oh, we didn't. Thank you, Derek.
Dennis is doing everything.
I'm just trying to get, trying to move us along.
Actually, I heard that your first meeting was going like to 11:00 tonight.
Mr. York, you're out of order.
I saw that before I came here. I remember my first meeting, I think we were here until around midnight, and I left and I said, oh.
What did I sign up for? Summary of non-public actions from February 19th, 2014. Mr. Miller made a motion to approve the non-public minutes of February 19th, 2014. Mr. Bork seconded, the motion carried 301 with Mr. York abstaining. Mr. York made a motion to accept the resignation of Leslie Khan, CHS French teacher. Mr. Miller seconded, the motion carried 400. So now we can go on to school board member committee assignments for the 2014, well, actually, it's from today, not necessarily, no, I guess it is 1415. So we did the first two. Budget committee. You want to do the whole year?
Do it.
Thank you, Brian. See, now that he's had a taste of it, he wasn't too sure this time last year, but
Nope.
He understands the playing field now. Building Planning Advisory Subcommittee, that was Trish.
I'll do it.
Safety Committee?
I'll do it. I'm done.
You're done? John, just, I'm going to take these two and move on. Partnerships, Grants and Donations Committee. How often do they meet? Is it a monthly?
I don't think they even meet anymore, so I was, I would just put it on.
I'll get my second one.
They've not met since I've been here.
So I don't know if you wanted to take that off.
I want to say the last time they met was probably when Mary was here, because Mary was the one that kind of drove that, so. But having somebody involved with the PTO and the Partnership Grants and Donations Committee can't be a bad thing. I'm sure he could start it back up.
We're just making an ad hoc committee.
Committee of one. Brian's going to have a meeting at his house.
There's nothing to do between now and September, though, right?
What's that?
That's right, there's nothing to do between now and September.
No, we didn't.
Technology Committee. I've done that in the past, and I'm happy to do it again unless somebody else wants to, unless Derek wants to do it, or John, or anybody.
Taking it easy this year.
Okay, I'll take technology. Perk Committee, that was Trish.
How often does that meet?
I think it varies.
It does, and Julie is really, really needs someone for that.
Sometime once a month, sometimes two, usually on the afternoon before a board meeting. Late afternoon.
How early is it? Is it like?
It's like four, I think is what Trish used to do.
Yeah. And it's typically been on board meeting nights.
Yeah.
It's been Wednesdays, because Trish has come here from.
From perk?
From perk.
And also, just for future meeting, Dennis, on that, I think the board should have a discussion of the expectation on the scoring, what was it, the, Trish was talking about the low scoring on the book, what was the word?
Lexile.
That we should set a standard of what we will accept a book to even come to us. I mean, because the last one was very low, we should, we should set a standard that says a book isn't at, if 110 is, is a, an above standard, or standard or above, then they shouldn't be bringing us books that have 90 or 95, because the board's not going to support that. Based on the conversation of last week.
I, I think that's probably a conversation to have with Dr. Hian, because what she would probably argue, what she has argued in the past, is that not all students are reading at the same level, and we need, we need a range of reading materials that will engage kids and allow them to be successful while still pushing them to that next level.
Well, maybe that.
I think the criticism was essentially that there seemed to be a disproportionate number of ones that were on the lower end of the Lexile scale, and were we balancing it?
Well, maybe that can be something the next time, Dr. Hian, that could be part of that discussion.
Well, I think it's probably good, because we're going to get the policy back to, or the procedures to align with the form, that's probably the best point to have that, to have that discussion.
That also will help the board member, while they're there, representing the board, to sort of have an idea of where the board is coming from on that, on that process.
Okay. C.TAP and then Prevention of Drugs and Alcohol and NA Wellness Committee.
I'll volunteer for that. How often does that meet, do you know?
Once a quarter.
Okay, I can do that. Can I ask why there isn't a prevention of the use of drugs and alcohol by students committee? Says NA.
When Cindy was on the board, she kind of drove that, and it kind of fell by the wayside, and so I put NA on it, it's up to the board if they want to reconstitute it or reinstate it.
I think that's really important. I'd volunteer for that if the board wants to do it.
No, that's good.
So Derek, are you doing perk?
Yes.
That's twice, that's almost like two committees, right there.
Perk?
Yeah.
Perk has a lot of homework.
Perk does have a lot of homework, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
Yes. Anything else, since Janine raised the point?
Books to your kids, right?
Anything else, anybody's interested or think we should do, including you, Dr. Cochran?
I don't think we have negotiations committees.
I was, I noticed that it was missing.
A lot of smiles around there.
I was not at all unhappy that.
I ran into Gordon on Monday at a St. Patty's event in Salem, and I said, how are you going to make up your lost revenue from Litchfield for the next, next three years? He chuckled and smiled.
I'm sure.
I think he's very glad not to be having to come to Litchfield for negotiations for a few years, so.
I'm sure Derek forgot his audit. And there is, Michelle did leave everybody a copy for.
Just so you have each other's numbers and email and, you know, contact information. I didn't put any personal information on there, so.
Thank you.
So now if I can follow the agenda correctly, that should take.
We're not doing the building group any longer?
John took it.
I took that one.
Yeah, I said Trish had that, and John volunteered for that one pretty quick.
Well, I figured that and safety, they sort of go hand-in-hand, at least, on that process, so.
He's going to bring new insight to the committee. Yeah, because after all, we got to do the security system since it passed, so.
Yeah.
So now I believe we're at correspondence, if I'm following my agenda correctly. There was.
Mr. Greath sent this one a hour ago.
Well, yeah, there was one that I thought was in there, too. It was another Common Core. I'm just not seeing it. Why educationalists want to flip the classroom? But actually, that was before, before the meeting, so. So Mr. Greath sent in, the PBD Teachers Union has requested, or talking about the standardized testing, and I know there was an article in the Telegraph that talked about Nashua's situation, where they were trying to opt out of the standardized testing as well, so. Approval of draft minutes from.
Where do you want to?
Do you have a?
Yeah, I had something in the approach, I mean, just inquiring about one of our policies, and that's the transportation of a student from an event, and because they require a copy of insurance card, but in St. New Hampshire, you're not required to have insurance.
So that's from, there's a policy that was gone over, and that was Primax's recommendation that if they're transporting a student, someone could make the argument that they were providing district transportation, and therefore they would have to have insurance that the district could rely on, since the district doesn't control the vehicle, the person.
Because the bus does have insurance, so that's why they would be required.
Yeah, that's why we did that, yeah. And part of the other reason was to help control post-game attendance with, you know, making sure all the students go where they're supposed to go, and it's not like, you know, Joe says, hey, I'm going to go home with my parents, and he goes home with one of his buddies, you know, you just lose control unless they're supposed to fill out some form prior to the event through the AD, so everybody knows what the expectations are. But that was Primax that drove the insurance requirement. But that was Primax that drove the insurance requirement. Approval of the draft minutes from the fifth.
Motion to accept the minutes, as written.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
No, I said aye.
Just, just here to let you know.
The short one, John, you remember.
Yeah, send it out.
I threatened to adjourn right after we.
Started, that's right.
We went to order. Community Forum.
We're only community tonight.
I'm sure they're all watching.
I, I know. Carolyn Lake, President of the Litchfield Education Association, on behalf of the membership, I wanted to thank the school board for taking the vote you did, allowing the contract to go to the community. We know that, you know, we asked you to please allow them to have a say. They did. And we also wanted to thank the community of Litchfield for their support in passing our contract. Unfortunately, we didn't get the budget, but we, on behalf of the members, we just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Seeing no one else, superintendent's comments?
I'll try to be very brief. While we'll probably not have them in for recognitions, I did want to thank the boys' basketball team and coach for a great season, a fabulous playoff run, and a real show of class and some very good basketball. Having seen the team play last year in the finals that they lost, this year, to me, looked like a, a totally different group. Zach was back, a year older, a year bigger, a year stronger. But the whole running of the team, they were disciplined, they were, they're, you know, now the second year with the group, Mr. Langwa had a very disciplined group. They understood what, what they were to be doing. They executed, they ran into a team that just played tremendous defense. And I'll throw in a little comment about, and refereeing just kind of let them play. And if a referee had called the game in a different way, or a couple of balls had bounced, had bounced in, and one might have gone the other way. But my conversations with, with the principals and the athletic director, since I've come, I think are very much in sync with, with Coach Patterson. That is, he's looking for people who want to come in and build a program and make a difference in the quality of the kids' lives. That there is life after sports, and it's a philosophy that I adhere to, and I, I believe Mr. Langwa fits that mold. I believe Mr. Allen fits that mold. And the people that are here coaching now, I think, do a great service to the students, to the school district, and to the town. And the, the boys' basketball team is a very good example of that. So, thank you, and congratulations on a great season.
School board member comments?
Welcome to our newest member.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much. Very happy to be here. And I'd like to thank everybody in the community who supported me, so I'm very grateful.
I want to echo Dr. Cochran's comments on the boys' team. With my daughter not competing this year, I had an opportunity to see both teams play instead of just seeing the girls' team play. And he coaches in a way that's positive, not, he's not a stand-on-the-sideline screamer. Coach Allen's not a stand-on-the-sideline screamer, which you see your share of that at Division III at the high school level. And I actually came in for the end of Sports Awards on Monday night, and I listened to what the coaches had to say to the teams, and his was a life message. It wasn't, it wasn't about, oh, we did great and we're gonna do better next year. It's, these are the things you need to do in your life, and these are the things you do to make yourself a better person, which is, I guess, what we want all of our educators, whether they're in the classroom or administrators and coaches to come forward with. So I want to congratulate the boys' team, I want to congratulate the girls' team. Spirit also came in fourth in the state this year, up significantly from where they were last year. So that's a great accomplishment for the Spirit squad. And then just the art, wandering through the school, looking at all the art. It's just amazing stuff. I love the little bones thing out here. Those bones are moving or whatever it is. I'm always amazed when you see the, the artistic level of quality that we can get through the district, so.
And last night was the choral, and tomorrow will be the insurance concert for the.
Full house, it looked like?
Pretty, pretty packed by information I received. But, but yeah, it is great. I mean, I was at, made both of the, the girls' and the boys' games, and they were very good games in that sense. Again, I would encourage the, the administration to put the school board in their email loop so that we know what's occurring of events in their certain schools. I showed up after, in the third quarter of the girls' game, but that, you know, I got to see the best part. I didn't have to live through all the anxiety that the rest of you all did. But I got there, they were ahead, so it looked pretty good. And in, in that sense, but, you know, Kylie was, you know, walking us through the hall a week or so ago when all the stuff was up, pointing out all the various stuff that she did and friends and stuff. And it's, it's just, you know, it's amazing. I've been doing this now, you know, going into the fifth year, but it's amazing the stuff that our students continue to put out in extracurricular and co-curricular activities that are above and beyond the, just the day-to-day education process in the classroom. And, you know, Campbell, you know, what our students do here and what our, our town does in support of our, our, our schools, and, and what the teachers do, it's just, it's just phenomenal, the, the process and the education and, and things that occur, so. You know, I'm proud to be part of the Litchfield School process, so.
One other thing that happened, it was actually Monday morning. The NHIA held their New Hampshire Scholar-Athletes Recognition Ceremony for Division III. They hold it up at Concord at the Capitol Theater. And there was probably 20 Campbell students, all seniors, that had a 3-3 or higher GPA and lettered in two varsity sports. Which, when you think about it, was amazing. But the director of the NHIA actually said, okay, I can't see who stands out. So he said, how many of the students out there participate in something other than, you know, an athletic activity? And almost every Campbell student stood up. And then, how many of you volunteer in your community? Almost every Campbell student stood up. And he asked two other questions, all relating to something non-athletic, but is somehow an extracurricular you're involved outside of school. And it was just amazing to see him stand up. And he said, so they do all this, they play at least two sports, and they get a 3-3. This is the cream of the crop that you want, that you want your high schools to produce. And it was just great to see that many students there. I mean, there were some, some schools there that had like five kids that stood up. You don't know how big the school is, but I think every Division III school was represented in some fashion, so. It was great to see that, that level of performance on the field, as well as in the classroom, get, get recognized by the state. Business Administrators Report. Mr. Markleins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Congratulations. In your packet, as I presented last month, is the executive financial summary, if you will, for the month of February, and for the benefit of Mrs. Laporel, I'll go over briefly. This report basically provides a snapshot of the district and its two major funds, which is the General Fund and the Food Service Fund. The top left-hand block is, is basically a snapshot of the operating budget relative to revenue received to date, expenditures, encumbrances, and where the, excuse me, the school district is relative to those two positions of cash balance in our operating balance fund. As Dr. Cochran mentioned, the second block down on the left column represents approximately 74% of the operating budget, which is salaries and benefits. And as you can see by the bottom total, we have either expensed or encumbered, we might as well say, for all intent purposes, 100% of what was in the budget for salaries and benefits. The other metrics, if you will, some of the areas, would be substitute utilities that I provide you with a snapshot of where the district is at relative to actual expenditures, and then also after encumbrance, where we'll be, where we anticipate to be. And the same scenario is, is set in the second column for food service. I did add to the bottom right some notes that I thought would be helpful for the board to, to receive. The first one, obviously, that more than likely won't change much this year is the Capital Reserve Fund, of which the district has two, for the Education Fund, as well as capital improvement. I also, we go through a monthly exercise to reconcile, if you will, the self-funded accounts. So I provided the board with a little scenario there relative to the, the total budget for the Function Code 1501, which is the self-funded accounts, what's in the budget. Excuse me, what we have received to date from the, from the standpoint of revenue and what we've expensed. And as you can see, those are rounding issues that we reconciled each month to make sure that we received the proper revenue to offset the expenditures going out on the self-funded. And then Student Activities Fund, I thought it was, it was important for the board to see, especially where it was one of the items that is included in the 2013 audit that we need to do some work, and I presented to the board that will be coming forth soon with a plan to remedy the issues that were brought out by the audit report for 2013. But you can see with the three schools, we have a substantial balance in the Student Activities Fund, almost a quarterly adult. So it's something that I certainly will bring back to you, some recommendations on how we can put forth some, maybe some additional controls and some oversight into those areas, and really to make sure that the accounts that are being listed as student activities actually infect student activity funds. So that's kind of a snapshot of where the district's at today.
Frank, could you just comment if you have anything new in terms of transportation?
I can.
I know Nashua was doing some negotiation, but.
It's actually, just so we, you can see, transportation update, right?
Is it on there? I apologize.
Handwritten, no, handwritten.
Oh, okay. I'm like, I looked and I didn't see it, but.
The school board secretary gets angry if you get too late in the afternoon with updates, because you're like, wow.
I'm looking out for the school board.
Thank you, Michelle.
Through the, through the cooperative effort of the superintendent, we just received an update that it appears Nashua will be going to vote on their next school bus, school vendor, next Monday evening. Coincidentally, I also received an email today from our current vendor asking for some updated information. So I can't tell you who will be the selected from the Nashua Public School District, but it appears that it may be to our advantage. And we will know better with that next week.
Okay.
And if that's the case, not naming, but if, if it should be, we have the opportunity to negotiate an extension. So that, time is getting, as we all know, we're getting nervous a little bit, because we do have transportation needs for the extended school year coming up this summer.
That's assuming that Nashua follows its tradition of a Monday night full board meeting. We'll check the website. We know it's going to the next board meeting, and typically that's Monday night.
Continue?
Can, just real quickly, on the, on the Student Activities Fund, can we set a, a time? At a, a time, put on the agenda for a future meeting, the Student Activities Fund discussion, so that we can, you know, know that there's a end date, you know, either in April, beginning of May, that there's enough time for the administration to do the review and, and gather the information that's necessary so that, that the board can get their hands around. I mean, you know, there just seems to be awful, awful lot of money in these accounts, and I can't fathom that they all became from this year's students. So my, my question is, is student activity fees carrying over from year to year to year? And, you know, so if students are putting into the money as freshmen and never, they never reap any benefit, and they move on, you know, what's really going on with that? So I, I just think it's something that, that we just gotta get a handle on and a better understanding on.
Well, so certainly we, we should have a conversation at a later date, we can do that. But I think the Student Activities Fund is, the name can be slightly misleading, because it's, at the, at the high school, for example, I believe.
Cannot be.
Parking money goes in there, which comes from students. I believe gate receipts from sporting events go in there, or is there a separate account for that?
I'm not sure.
I mean, I think, if it's all ending up in the one account, while it's labeled as student activities, it's labeled that because that's what the money's supposed to get expended for, no matter what the source is. I know when they pay their dues, when you get to the senior year, you can get your dues money back. Most students opt to give a gift to the school. Most, I think the last three years, they've put money into the Allison Corf Scholarship Fund. But it, it would be nice to know the sources, I guess, if they're all funneling into that one account. So we can make an informed decision.
Coincidentally, the CPA firm that pretty much most of the school districts in the state abide by were written by our auditor. They put on presentations, so would I, in fact, emailed Ashley, who did the audit for the district. What I like to do typically when the audit report is complete, which I provided you each with a copy this evening, is have the, the lead auditor, if you will, come in, because it really is an audit conducted for the school board, not for the administration, although we, we are a major part of putting that together. It's really an audit for the, for the school board, and you should hear from the auditor relative to what their findings are. And I would like, in addition to that, is for maybe, because that was, Student Activities Fund was a finding in that audit, to have her maybe discuss some of the issues and maybe gives, bring some insight to it as well, by definition. So that'll be helpful, I think, for the board to get. Excuse me.
It may be that a forensic audit may not be able to identify where all the funds came from and where they. And so it's likely that, that at least a portion of that fund will be fairly nebulous. So, but I, I think, I think we need to make some legitimate attempt to try and, as much as possible, make sure the money that was put in there for specific intentions ends up where, where it was intended for.
Well, it would be.
I suspect that, that some, and it may be a significant amount, we, we may not be able to apportion to a source, unless we have really good records going back, basically since the school was, was open. So recognize that, that, you know, it, it may take what's in the fund to do a forensic audit deep enough to try and figure out what to do with the money that would be gone because it paid for the forensic audit. But I, I think we have to do our due diligence and try to determine that, and then set up a system that will prevent that, you know, co-mingling of, of funds in the future. And I, we brought it up during the, the budget presentation, said it was a goal for next year. I, I, you know, I think both the Business Administrator and I thought we would be to it before now. We've not, but it is, it is clearly on our radar.
It's definitely on the radar.
And we know that the, that the board would like to, to see that looked after so that we know where the money's coming from, what is being spent on, and can speak to confidence that students are getting what they're, what they're paying for.
In your packet as well, I provided you with, we called it, it really is just an analysis of the fuel oil, because, again, this time of year, Business Administrators got, started getting a little nervous. The school board started asking about what it's gonna look like towards the end of the year. So we look at certain light items that historically will cause any district concern, especially given the winter that we've experienced here in the Northeast, and, and also the, the issue we ran into regarding our supplier. So we, I did take a look at our oil consumption this year, and that's the, kind of a quick graph I provided you with, as, as well as some data. As you can see at the top, our budget for GMS and LMS, this is just a comparison of the fuel oil. We've overspent the budget for those two locations by almost, well, $10,600. Our variance over the budget, we've, we've used, we've had delivered a little over 4,000 gallons over what we had budgeted for. That's not the surprising piece, obviously, with the, the number of days that we've had that have been well under the typical average for the, for that particular time of the season. The second graph, I wanted to take a look at where we're trending with our, and it's a big analysis that you can do, obviously, injecting the number of degree days and all those good things. But I just wanted to see from a gallon, gallon standpoint. As you can see, the two schools, while GMS is more flat than LMS, LMS's variance is a sharper. And interestingly enough, we're actually trending a little down right now for this current school year at GMS. current school year at GMS. And that is probably directly as a result of the facilities director, Dave Ross, really managing the building, putting it down, for instance, to sixty on a Friday afternoon and bringing it back up midnight on a Monday morning. So we've been aggressive, he, he's very aggressive, but I think part of it is due, due to the age of the boilers as well, he's trying to manage it a little bit, maybe more so than we are at LMS. Question would be differential of how much did the problem that we experienced with the contractual vendor to supply oil and subsequently terminating that contract cost, well, seventy seven hundred dollars. Which I, I believe I estimated in the beginning with somewhere around six to eight thousand, it was a little bit on the high, high side.
Do you remember if this line item was, was cut at all during budget discussions? The, the heating and cooling part, if that was reduced by the budget committee at all?
That would have been Derek's year.
I, I believe it was.
This year.
This, this contract here, definitely it was.
It was reduced.
I think that was really the three year, we're talking about three year averages.
Yeah. They took the cost averages.
Yeah, you know.
Yeah.
I mean, in two thousand twelve, you, you only, you, with the three, I mean, two thousand eleven, you used forty-four thousand gallons. In two thousand twelve, you used thirty-two thousand gallons. So if you, you know, if you took a look, look at that, that's, you know, you know, that doesn't, didn't help. And, and the question is, did, did going forward for this next year, do we have a reduction this next year?
Well, this year's budget, if you recall, was the year that they made an eight thousand dollar reduction in fuel oil based on a three-year average of price other than use. And when they were told that it was price and not use, they still voted to reduce the entire eight thousand dollars.
But even if they would have voted in, in, for, they would have had three low years. I mean, we used thirty thousand gallons, then we used forty-four, then we used thirty-two. So you average that out and you're somewhere down around thirty-three thousand, looking into the, you know, hours, we've been at forty thousand for two years, so.
Right. But as we all know, we could look at this and then apply degree days and know it's direct effect on the weather and unless we all fully believe in the farmer's almanac, which was right on this year, we should budget accordingly, you know? Yeah, I mean, it was dead on. They said below average temperatures and above average snowfall. You know, so this, so we were, we did feel the effect, if you will, the sting of, of not having a vendor follow through on the, on the contractual gallonage per, price per gallon. We did take a hit there, but there was still some that we would have taken regardless.
Their building is nicely sided now, by the way, too.
Chris Fuller says?
Yeah. I drove by over the weekend, hello, they put siding on the building.
I approve.
The only other piece that I'll take out of order, if I may, Mr. Chair, is, is the, I made mention of the operating budget, the superintendent and I have been working on and with Mr. Musilli to now load in, if you will, all of the impact of the vote from this past couple of weeks. That will be loading up all the step increases for the LEA positions and, and putting those all into the personnel budget. And then, once we have all of that loaded in, we'll bring that over to a new iteration of the budget, which is basically taking the, the recommended budget that the school board had, bringing that over and then making some adjustments that we can take out, we'll be bringing a, a, what we hope will represent a good budget for the board to consider on, on April ninth. One of the areas that we need some direction from the board, however, is the non-LEA positions. Again, while we had, we did budget in the recommended budget at the recommendation of the, of the board, forty-five thousand dollars for step increases to non-LEA positions as well as a one percent increase for administrators. Now, obviously with the default budget, we cannot recommend a salary increase. We can, you can look at that as a board and recommend if you want to make a one-time adjustment to that based on the savings. We had that discussion, I believe, a while back relative to the anticipated savings if the LEA contract were to pass. I think we projected on being on the low side, somewhere in the vicinity of sixty-five to seventy thousand dollars would be the net savings after we passed. We looked at all the other expenses associated with the LEA contract. Thoughts?
At least the numbers, I guess. I can get one, what does a stepping, what'd you say the step increase was for staff?
Yep. The, those that are scheduled on staff, if you just give me one minute, I guess. Those staff members that are scheduled for a step increase, that amount is thirty-five thousand one fifteen, which was what we had recommended. Yep. And then the administrative salary increase of one percent was ten thousand three eighty-six, total forty-five five oh two. And that's the amount that was in the school board's recommended budget passed over to the budget committee.
And that stayed in the budget, they didn't cut that, correct?
Didn't cut that.
And that's what's sitting in the default as well, is that same amount, is.
There should be a step in the fall, right?
A step, and then I think the one percent because it's part of the pay plan.
Same as last year.
Should have been in the default as well.
We would have used that calculation.
I think, I think I'd like to see your plan for dealing with the default budget before we vote on allocating those funds.
We can do that.
Because, well, I think it's, people deserve an opportunity to increase their salaries. We need to determine what that hundred and seventy-five, hundred and eighty thousand, how that's going to shake out. And, so, I mean, I, isn't there a, a time frame for a form that you guys need to submit?
It is twenty days.
From the election?
From the date of election, that's why the, that April ninth is a good date.
Is that our next, will we meet before then?
You as a board, we've always, you as a board all know this, that regardless of what it is that I submit to DRA, that, that will be the starting point, if you will, then you can amend it from that point. So, so long as I complete my report to the board for your approval, you can always make adjustments.
We're not meeting again until the tenth, right? On the ninth?
The ninth.
Back.
Do you want to amend that?
I won't be here.
So I think it's a great.
We can put together what we think is, is our best rendition at that point in time, but it can be amended as, as we know more. And quite honestly, open enrollment for healthcare is in May.
Yes, it is.
And that's going to have a huge impact. You can imagine that depending on what happens, you're going to see a, a significant shift or none at all. And we really don't know.
Right.
And, and so even without this, we would be making these adjustments. So we do have some ideas of places that we can go and things that, that we can do at this point in time, but to some extent, it's, it's going to be a placeholder for some of those reductions.
So are you, will you be sending out to the school board or to the chair to then send to the school board somewhere in the next week or ten days? Not the whole budget report that shows it, but, you know, this is, these are the line items and these are the thoughts and changes that we want to do that is.
We're approaching it from two ways. I'm looking at trying to find the hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars by taking the existing budget and starting to say, what are some of the areas that we think we can, we can make reductions that are not impacting strategic initiatives? On the other hand, Frank is taking the budget forward and starting to build next year's budget from the ground up. And so I, because it's easier to do the math than I'm doing, I'm probably a little bit further along, but again, so much of building the budget up from the, I mean, a twenty million dollar budget built up again with seventy percent salaries and benefits with all of the, the, the step changes and then, you know, a three to four million dollar benefits area that may or may not have significant change. So, you know, we, we know that, we know where we can go to get some of that right off the top. I mean, I could, I could give you tonight a report on where we could find probably around a hundred thousand dollars.
Well, part of my concern is that I, I don't want to see the reduction fall on the shoulders of the operating budget. And then excluding salaries and benefits. So, you know, so we have salaries.
That's where it's going to fall, John. Unless you're writing a check.
Yeah. I, I know we have salaries and benefits, but, but we've, we've tried very hard as a board to really squeeze the best value out of that twenty-five, twenty-four percent that we have. And really, in, in a process of, of ranking priorities where we, you know, remove things and, and made decisions on things over the last couple of years. And I don't want to see that momentum be lost on a default because of the default budget. I mean, you know, I'm concerned about technology because we, we keep trying to set that plan in place to begin the process of catching up. And it's like we get one step forward and then we get two steps back because of the, you know, because of the voters voting in the default budget. And, and in particularly this year because we, we had made some pretty concrete decisions on technology. So, you know, I would encourage us to, to look firmly across, you know, if, if you need to budget cut, then it needs to be an equal proportion. If it's a hundred percent, then it needs to be seventy-five percent from salaries and benefits and twenty-five percent from the operations because that's where the, that's how the budget falls and that would be a fair acclamation of that process. So I would encourage you to look at it in, in that, in that sense.
Speaking of technology, do you have a gut feeling on the computer lab at GMS? Because we have a teacher now, but we have no lab, we have no budget. So do you think that's going to stay?
We have the money for a teacher.
It's money for a teacher, exactly, yeah. And I'm not sure that's an option. Can you spend the money in the lab the first year and teach it the second year?
Yeah, I think you can spend that money on anything but a teacher.
Because, because you put it on a warrant, you cannot change the intent of the warrant.
So is a teacher, but no, no lab?
We're, we're sitting in a room, operating fully on the assumption that the lab is going forward.
Okay.
And that, that it's a priority item.
I'm not letting you add anything to the agenda anymore. I just can't.
I said I was going to be brief.
Then John jumped in.
You got it.
Okay. Well, then your board packets was an update on PIPACA. Some of the, the changes that were just, excuse me, implemented on February ninth, and we got a twelve-page memo from employment, employment attorney interpreting that. One of those, those changes is the substantially all definition whereby seventy percent of full-time employees for twenty fifteen plan year need to be offered insurance rather than ninety-five percent of full-time employees. That ninety-five percent doesn't come into effect till two thousand sixteen. The calculation for the no offer penalty for twenty fifteen, that has changed as well. The total number of employees is minus eighty rather than minus thirty times the two thousand annual for the twenty fifteen plan year to determine if there's going to be any penalty at all. And most interestingly is the dependent definition. When we're talking about offering insurance, it's to an employee's children younger than age twenty-six, but not spouse, foster children, or stepchildren. So with that said, we have determined as a district, we're going to do a twelve-month look-back period from April sixth, twenty fourteen to April fourth, twenty fifteen. And following that is the administrative period, which is not to exceed a ninety-day measurement that compiles all of the information from the look-back leading up to the stability period, which basically follows the, to the following year through June thirtieth to sixteen. And basically what this does is just to ma, make sure that everyone who has been eligible for insurance is either elected or not, and if we've had anyone have changes in hours, if they're eligible for insurance, they're offered that insurance. Now, certainly the makeup of the district is diverse. We have exempt and non-exempt employees, stipend positions, anything and everything. So certainly you can't look at them all under the same lens. So in the look-back calculation for exempt salary employees, their hours of service are determined from the hours worked and paid, inclusive of holidays and vacation weeks that fall during the school year, divided by the number of weeks paid during the look-back period. For our non-exempt employees and substitutes, their hours are calculated by the total number of actual hours worked excluding vacations, summer months, because you can't penalize them if they're not working, divided by the number of weeks they're employed, or they employ work during the look-back period. And interestingly, from the example we gave in there, just a little sample, three-month look-back period, right now, the district is in pretty good shape as far as if we were to offer insurance to anyone working thirty hours or more, we only identified thirteen people that would fall under that criteria. And interestingly, ten out of thirteen of those folks are paraprofessionals who either have an additional assignment as a bus monitor, or they coach, or they have some other activity in addition to the one-on-one services they provide a student. The other three individuals identified were all administrative assistants who also had co-curricular, extracurricular activities that they were participating in. So in the immediate future, we don't look, it doesn't look too bad, but one thing that you, you'll see in the recommendations is we're going to have to monitor more closely in the twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen year, those employees who care, who have more than one assignment. I mean, certainly we have individuals who are tied to IEPs and five oh four plans, but then these other people like administrative assistants and such, we're going to have to hopefully see other people who are willing to take on additional assignments, either teachers or other individuals where there's not an impact to the district, or external applicants. And one other variable that hasn't been determined yet through ACA is game officials and scoreboard operators and how they're calculated and how they factor into those numbers. So.
Why would game officials calculate into that? They're a ten ninety-nine vendor from the, somebody we hire, aren't they?
The district made a change in that, I believe, three or four years ago, or two or three years ago, sometime recently, changed from a ten ninety-nine to a W two. One of the recommendations that will come subsequent down the road will be return them to ten ninety-nine status.
These are, when you say game officials, you're talking about referees for sports and stuff?
Yes.
But aren't they part of a, a state association that subcontract them out to us?
Well, the association only assigns them to the games, the individual, the home team pays for the, any officials, whether it's the timekeeper, whatever.
Most districts treat them as a ten ninety-nine independently.
Can I, can I ask just a question on your example?
Sure.
I know it's new math. Eighty-seven divided by four should be twenty-two instead of twenty-nine.
Common core, John.
What?
That's it, supposed to catch that, you had third grade.
I'm sorry, where was he?
The example.
The example. So I don't know if you're supposed to be using three weeks, which would be corrected twenty-nine hours, or four weeks, which would then be twenty, about twenty-two hours.
I apologize, it should be four weeks.
The weeks worked.
Okay. But it says, it works, your example shows a person working over a four-week period of time, working eighty-seven hours, dividing it by four weeks, even though they only worked three of the four, and then you tell me it equals twenty-nine, but it can only equal twenty-two at the most.
But we're excluding that vacation week, so.
But that's not what the text says.
But that's not what it says.
That's all we say.
The way it was originally written was written correctly without that vacation week in there, so.
But, but no, wait a minute, no, well, the example, it says for non-exempt employees and substitutes, their hours of service are determined from records of the total number of actual hours worked, okay, excluding vacation. So it should be three weeks is what it should be.
Yes, I agree.
There is a lot of information in this memorandum. Again, I'll, I'll credit to Tracy, Michelle, and Christine because I just sat back and watched them try to get through the memorandum from legal counsel. And then I made the mistake of attending a PIPACA conference on Friday, so I was emailing them all the things I thought I knew and they told me to get lost because they already knew it. There's a lot of information here. Bottom line is that, that one of the major changes that will impact this district, we are considered a major organization relative to the status of PIPACA. One of the changes that just came out last month is that so long as we are offering insurance to seventy-five percent of our full-time equivalent employees, we get a pass the first year.
Seventy percent.
That's us. We are.
That, that first year is defined.
Fourteen fifteen.
Right. From July one to end of June, so.
So next year, we get a pass and most major employers will receive a pass, again, so long as they meet the criteria of offering insurance to seventy percent of their FTEs. We are.
Right.
The other piece here and the relative to the. The other piece here, and the relative to the, uh, most school districts, if not all school districts, are utilizing the twelve-month look-back because it flattens it out. And bottom line, if you look at the sampling that Michelle, Christine, and Tracy were working, ten out of the thirteen of our at-risk of needing to offer insurance are paraeducators. All but one, um, they're over the thirty, uh, twenty-nine hour threshold due to additional assignments. That additional assignment for the most part is we have a para working with a student during the day. The IEP is modified that now the, the student requires a para on the bus as a bus monitor. So typically that is an easy transition from the standpoint of, of special ed will assign the para to stay with that student on the bus as a monitor. Well, that adds hours then. And that's bringing that, the majority of those paraeducators that are over the twenty-nine hours. So, so that's manageable. That's something that we've already had a conversation with the director of special ed on and some of the things that we can manage that to keep the average number of hours below thirty. And there might be some other things that will need to be monitored there. Coaches, that's a big, that's, I can tell you on Friday, again, I was coming up with all these great ideas, driving the three of them crazy with my emails, but some of the school districts, as crazy as it sounds, is treating coaches as volunteers and the money that's provided to them as an honorary. Because if you think about the impact of tracking hours for any of us that have coached or know people that have coached, uh, we will be violating the Department of Labor and not offering a minimum wage because the number of hours that would be tracked, for instance, on a coach of basketball or football.
Right. Not only, not only that, you're gonna be well above the nine point five percent.
Oh, yeah.
So.
For what's offering.
You're not gonna be, there, there are very few districts that are gonna meet the nine point five percent and that is, is a black hole as well because how do you calculate that? Because how do, how do we obtain spousal income?
A lot of those, according to the superintendents, a lot of those offer healthcare to paras and they're just planning on paying the fine.
Right.
And they're just building into the budget from, from the get-go. We're somewhat exceptional in South Central in that regard.
So again, there's a lot of information here and we apologize if it just served to maybe muddle it a little bit because it did for us. However, I think from just the bottom-line recommendation that the, while observation of the district is in a better place, in an okay place for the upcoming school year and certainly there'll be more information, more recommendations coming forth as this becomes more aligned, uh, the regulations to the recommendations from, from the people that know much more than we do on this subject. So.
It's gonna change.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
So while you're doing this study, um, and you're doing this process, can you do, um, a comparison of what it would cost the district to opt out of the insurance plan for all full-time employees that aren't under a contract? And what that savings is, what our penalty is, and whether or not it makes sense to, um, pay the penalty and give the savings to the employees and allow them to go get their own insurance through this plan? Because we're gonna continue to play this game and we're never going to get in front of this truck.
Well, part of the problem is gonna be the threshold that Tracy and Frank were talking about. Well, it's seventy percent this year. It goes to whatever the.
Ninety-five percent, 2016.
And then you're gonna pay the penalty for every employee, whether you offer them insurance or not. So if you have a hundred and twenty-two full-time people in the district and there's eighteen administrators or eighteen non-LEA people that you don't give insurance, so you don't pay the penalty on the eighteen, you pay the penalty on one twenty-four minus.
Well, I mean, I understand, but we gotta figure out what is in the best interest.
That's two hundred thousand dollars for the penalty.
Yeah, but I mean, but if it's two hundred thousand to them and, and the, and the, and the healthcare costs were, let's say, seven hundred thousand, so you pay the fine of two thousand and you spread the other five hundred thousand back across the employees, you're, you're, you're at a net zero.
That, that's only one, that's only one piece of the fine, however, if those employees then go to the exchange.
And are provided with subsidy.
Well, I mean, you have to, you have to, you have to play out, well, you have to play out that scenario, what the worst case scenario is.
I mean, I'm, I'm pretty good, but there's some unknowns in there that I don't know where I'd even go to make that determination because I don't even believe the federal government's figured that out yet.
And John, with your math prowess you just discovered here tonight at the meeting, you could probably look at the budget and do it yourself.
I doubt it because, because of the fact that this thing is ever changing. I'd be calculating on a number that was irrelevant, you know?
There in the same boat you are.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying.
That's why we allowed him to move over to our side.
But they do have, but they do have the information that is, that, that summarizes and says, okay, we have this, these blocks of individuals and these are, this is the, the amount of cost of it is. And if we apply certain formulas across that process, which is exactly what you're going to do anyway, because that's how they, they, they have to do that to try to get in front of it anyway. It's just one more process of putting and calculating that, that, that formula across the process. And, and I, I do agree that it, it's a monumental task, but it's a task that inevitably, inevitably we're going to go back to the, to the taxpayer and say, okay, healthcare benefits, they're gonna catch up, the benefits are gonna catch up to what we pay for salaries if we're not careful. And, and we need to be able to take a look at, at, at that, at that process. I mean, I mean, you're gonna, you're gonna find very quickly, I believe, the business world's gonna figure this out pretty quickly. And the districts, schools, and the public sector needs to be able to follow the lead of the private sector because the private sector will figure it out very quickly and make the correct decisions in what is the best interest of their company and their employees. So if you see them beginning the process of, of the same thing I'm talking about, you can rest assured that that's a direction you need to begin looking at because that's the best interest of, of using your resources to the best advantage that you can.
I, I think quite honestly, we'll, we'll start by trying to manage the para hours for the para positions. And this year, even though we'll not be eligible for penalties in fourteen fifteen, we still believe we want to get those, those practices in place and those expectations in place. As we move forward during the year, we're gonna try and get some clarity around what is happening with paras, with additional assignments. Um, that really is the, the, the troubling area. And it's gonna take a while to get some clarity. The, the difficulty becomes, as part of the fifteen, sixteen budget process, will we know enough to make an informed decision about how to budget for the situation with that's hopefully smaller number of employees who may or may not.
But didn't we, didn't we, um, didn't we discuss this as a board and decide that, um, that we weren't going to mic, that we, we decided not to micromanage, you know, people to be under thirty hours? That the amount of, remember we, we were looking at adding personnel, paras so that people are only working five hours so they're getting to twenty-five?
We didn't make it an absolute rule, but we.
We also, I think, thought from the pure para perspective, we were okay because of the length of the year and you get the two and a half months in the summer where they have zero hours or if it's a full-time student, it's reduced hours, whatever the case might be. And I think now what they presented tonight sheds a little different light. If, if we're just assigning that person, we need to, we, the district, particularly the administration, needs to be forward-looking and saying, is this gonna put me over thirty hours? Because what we were gonna do was cut pairs to twenty-eight hours. Now, that doesn't account for five days on a bus, clearly. And there's, was a whole set of problems that were inherent with having a para for twenty-eight hours and having a para for six hours, continuity being the one thing we didn't want to disrupt.
So then the, 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 the other question on that, so then the question becomes if, um, as I'm reading this, let's say we have a para and with determination is that the week for that para is probably going to be thirty-two hours. So that para then is above the thirty, so they need to be offered the healthcare plan.
Well, not this year.
Now, I understand not this year, but, but at some point in time, it's going to be there. And if it's going to be there, is, do we just have to offer them the individual plan? Or do we have to offer them the family plan?
No, you just have to offer the individual.
So.
And it's gotta be not, less than nine and a half percent of their salary, which is where I think we'll have a problem there, too.
Well, they're copay. What they're, what they pay on it, not, 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 the, the cost of the plan is ten thousand dollars and we're paying eight thousand. The nine point five percent is reflective of the two thousand. It's what they're paying. Isn't that correct? That's what I read on that. It's what their part of it is.
You, you are correct. We backed off the absolute requirement that nobody was gonna be at thirty hours. So we created, in some cases, knowing that we had some time this year. But essentially that's where we're gonna be again next year, just to go back one agenda item. There was a plan to, to say nobody will be above a, uh, twenty-eight and a half, period. And then when we realized that it wasn't a year in which penalties would be involved anyway, we softened it. We still tried to keep it at that, but there were some cases where we said, well, for the rest of this year, this person will get this additional time because it just, it just made educational sense for them to extend with, with, with somebody who had to go, you know, be escorted on a bus ride. So you have a paras with a student, knows a student all day, and then extend the bit of additional time, knowing that there, that there was no cost to us, but also knowing that at some point in time, we may have to manage that a little tighter.
Well, I mean, I mean, the biggest, and also the big, I know that we're, we're not gonna be doing the, the study until, um, next spring. But that's not gonna help, help the school board and administration as you guys, as we, and, and as we go through our budget season, looking at the fall. So we, we almost need to, um, we almost need to make determinations of where we're going to go with this, whether or not we're going to, um, not microman, because again, if we, if we begin to micromanage the hours for a para for a student, that impacts that individual student in, in that, in the process of, of the IEP and what we're trying to do for the student. And I don't know if that really makes a lot of sense or will begin to undermine our, what we've done for the last couple of years on that. So, I mean, some of the things I think we need to do in this process is we need to be able to make determinations and, and be able to make, um, be able to make that impact because it's gotta, it's gotta be in your budget in the fall.
I'll just, just one thing to the board. This is a snapshot analysis. And as we all know, and I won't get into the issues regarding IEP teams make the determination relative to, um, paraeducators. We've got approximately fifty-six today, fifty-six paraeducates. We've got nine that we may have an issue with, of which we believe all but one are manageable. So I think that one that we know is outside of the thirty, upside of the thirty, we, we need some more information on because if it's a normal school day, we shouldn't be at thirty. So I think for all three schools, a, a normal one-on-one paraeducator working with a child, we should still be okay with the thirty hours. So again, and Dr. Cochran did make a determination that the coordination of all the paras for all three schools would fall under the Director of Special Ed versus each individual principal making the determination regarding how they were gonna assign paras. So that's gonna help us because the Director of Special Ed is right next door to me. And I'm constantly going over to saying, how are we doing with paras? And we need to manage that. And we need to manage it now because again, we're in the cycle of the look-back period. So I think from the standpoint of the board, and, and my recommendation is, at this point, we're okay. We need to, you know, we need to look at those nine paras and find out what is causing them to exceed the thirty hours.
And even when it goes to ninety-five percent, if we have a hundred and fifty full-time employees, that gives, still gives us a buffer of about eight, eight people.
That's right.
So even if we only manage two of them, we're still within that buffer.
Well, that's my point, is.
It's not that close.
If we could manage the bu, just the bus monitor piece.
Yeah, then we're fine.
Then we should be within that five percent.
Because we go from the one twenty we have now, if you suddenly count all the paras because they're over thirty, Derek said, you end up with a much larger number of which to.
One twenty is teachers, full-time teachers, right? And you add in all the administrative staff. We gotta be up to near a hundred and fifty full-time employees that already get insurance.
But then you're gonna add in, now all of a sudden, the paras that we've always counted as part-time would go into that full-time calculation, so it's gonna go even higher. So, even if it's another ten or fifteen.
It's a hundred sixty.
You're, you're just jacking that number up even higher.
We, we think the next time we take a snapshot, uh, and take a look at this towards the end of the school year, you know, we think we, the numbers will probably be similar, but then as we start the next school year and start making those assignments, then we'll, we'll know. Because again, it's awaited through the period of twelve months.
Are you all set? You're good?
I'm set.
Substitutes? Do we eat ten ninety-nine then, or are they employees?
They're employees.
I think that's a bigger problem, given the pool of substitutes that I've heard exist.
About that, and we're, we're gonna need to coordinate that at the SAU level versus the individual school. I did read an article.
It's more than one, it's a problem.
I did read an article. Four-day max, base school will be the.
From what I understand, the. It's not a pool, as Dr. Cochran just told me, it's a puddle of substitutes we have available.
I read an, read an article where, um, school districts have started, um, using staffing, um, companies.
Temps?
To, to fill their substitute.
Right. High-cost ones, give them insurance.
It should be a company in Massachusetts called Temped. And they had that concept to avert certain things from the schools, being able to just call off, just adding a sub today at, uh, at CHS. Schools found it to be not only not cost-effective, but ineffective from the educational standpoint.
No, I, I just.
We've already talked about that, that we're gonna need to.
I've read articles where.
Centralize the assignments of substitutes or at least be reporting back to the SAU that basically limiting the sub to a four-day work week.
You know, where I've read articles where districts have looked at their average absenteeism and just hired.
A teacher.
Teachers and said, you're the substitute pool, you come to school every day.
Right.
You're gonna get paid and when you're not, if, if, let's say they hire ten of them because that's what they need on a daily basis and they only need eight one day, then the other, the two that don't get put in the classroom work on curriculum or work on something else that the district needs. I'm not advocating for that, but you've got people trying to solve this problem.
We did that, one by districts.
Probably not.
We did that. We had two subs, permanent subs, we called them. And there was never lacking something for them to do and majority overwhelming during the time they were assigned to a, to a class. Especially when testing came out and.
And the other, the other piece to this is you don't have to offer them the same plan as everybody else. You could offer them a high deductible plan, a relatively low-cost, high deductible plan for the people that are over thirty, that's different from the two plans that we believe we're gonna go for.
Offer us. And if they declined it and then went to the.
It's their, we don't get billed for that.
Well, no, but I think we pay a three thousand dollar fee, right? If they decline ours or.
No, only if it's unaffordable.
If they're found to be subsidized, if they're eligible for subsidy.
But I think even if they turn it down, I didn't think you could be.
If they go to the exchange.
Yeah, if they go to the exchange and get something.
If they go to the exchange.
Play the odds, offer them something.
And that would probably be something we'd look at bringing in for fifteen, sixteen. Is just another insurance plan offering to those that we would need to, that are outside of the CBA for affordability.
Okay. Anything else from, on PIPACA?
That is, that part is probably, more than enough that you wanted to hear one evening.
I mean, you gotta have, we'll, we'll have to have a regular conversation over the next eighteen months.
Right.
And it, it.
It's not gonna, we'd like it.
It changes on Tuesdays, apparently. Tuesdays or Wednesdays are when the, the stuff gets released into the federal register and changes.
It is the federal register. But then it takes them six weeks to interpret and come out with some.
I know. I have your attorney put something you can read.
That's right. I'm not gonna touch that one. Thank you.
Are you all set?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, we are. Thank you.
Technology. Not seeing Mr. Hancock. You're gonna deal with technology.
Federal, you know, school dude issues, um, number tickets closed, that sort of thing. The district-wide piece, we have two committees on the go right now. One is the, uh, the group that was brought together to try and make a recommendation on a student information system and we'll deal a boat with that a little more in the, the presentation. And the other is a group that's meeting to rewrite the, uh, plan for the Department of Education that will make us eligible for, um, my memory is, is failing me right now. Um, federal fees.
E-rate?
Thank you. E-rate. Uh, we've been averaging about twenty-five thousand dollars a year in E-rate that we've been setting aside for the, the transition, for the cutoff to the, cut over to the new student information system. The group writing the, rewriting the plan has met once, uh, two. The group writing the, rewriting the plan has met once, two teachers from each school, Mr. Hancock, myself, and one community representative who happens to be one John Brunel. So we went through the first portion, did the orientation, gave them a snapshot of the presentation that you folks will see tonight, and we're meeting again, I think, next week. So work is underway on those two fairly significant committees.
On the tickets that are being opened and closed, can we get a more detailed breakdown on the tickets? You know, their hardware, software, you know, I mean, if we're having twenty-three tickets and they're all on hardware, are they recurring? I mean, if, we don't know if, from this, okay, there could be, there could be anything. I forgot their password, but I imagine it would be a ticket. But if we're, we don't know if there's a pattern of issues here that maybe the board can provide a little guidance on, so a little bit more detail.
Some are significant, some are not. And Matt Bennett is distributing his T-search that say, if it's not in school dude, it doesn't exist. And we're really trying to hold people to that. Because if, as soon as you start circumventing the system, then you stop being able to manage your priorities, and you stop being able to report what sorts of issues they're having. So we get grief at times, and Kyle and Matt get grief at times for pushing this hulu, but that's exactly why we do it, because we want to be able to look at the pattern of the problems and look at the volume oversight and see what happens.
Yeah, I mean, it seems that, you know, the numbers are a little better in the middle school and the elementary school. But I, you know, it seems fairly consistent that there are fifty-plus tickets or more in the high school. So it, I think it would be beneficial for the school board to see if what we're having are software issues or hardware issues, or, you know. Again, I just think it helps us.
And it may in some cases be that the high school actually uses Reddicker in the system for more things. So it's, it may be a usage piece. So, but we'll take a look at that and ask Mr. Hancock to do it up. And if we need him here to explain that, we can do that.
Jeanine, are you going to open a ticket right here?
I think I'm going to have to.
There's going to be one.
There's going to be one, school board. You're putting me at the top of it. School board, big letters about this big.
Okay. Election results. I think everybody's familiar with it. But John Regan was the moderator, elected with one thousand four hundred and seven votes. Lynn Baddeley was re-elected as treasurer with one thousand three hundred and thirty votes. Jason Garrett was elected as district clerk as a write-in with seven votes. And Janine Lepore was elected, obviously, since she's sitting here, with one thousand ninety-seven votes for a three-year term. And the clerk is a three-year term, treasurer's a three-year term, and the moderator is a three-year term. The budget did go down, seven sixty-three, yes, eight fifteen, no. And we already had a discussion about how to approach reallocating line items from the default to get into the operating budget. I will say, we have the opportunity to hold a special meeting if we do want to do so, as part of that warrant article. It is a, it's a board prerogative to schedule that, to try to.
Adjust the budget?
We get to revise the budget, and then we present it. It's a special meeting, as in town meeting day, not come and vote at the ballot box, but you show up for the meeting, presumably on a Saturday. When we regain the two million dollars. That is an option. I'm hoping to hear if the board thinks it's a good idea, wants to pursue it. I don't know the timeline, if there's a certain amount of time you have to do that. And we would need a plan. Yeah, that was because there was a special law that came through that, because of the restoration of the funding, you had a window in the fall to do that, and then adjust your budget. And I think it had to be done before revenues were due, which was the third week of September. I don't recall in my nine years, or eight years on the board, I guess, that we've ever had one of these. Whenever we've gotten a default budget, it's always been, we understand that's how the voters voted, and there was not a, something pressing in the budget that we couldn't adjust and fund.
I think this may be the first time that we've had the operating budget this tight, followed by a default budget, is my guess.
That's true.
Well, I guess we need to determine what the timeframe is, and then see what your recommendations are. And that would determine whether or not the board wants to incur the wrath of special election.
I think that's just it, though. I mean, you had like sixteen hundred people vote on it. How many people you think would come for a special meeting?
Sixty?
Yeah, let's say.
Sixteen?
Let's say it happens to pass. Yeah. I don't think it's fair, as far as to the public.
Derek and Dennis are in trouble next year for reelection, because they're the ones names are on the ballot. By that time, they'll have voted enough times, they'll have forgotten about it for the rest of us, you know?
You just wouldn't have enough of a turnout that it'd be fair.
Yeah. You're definitely not going to get sixteen hundred people.
That's.
If we did, we'd have a huge problem.
You wouldn't get a hundred.
I would agree.
Sixteen hundred. Have we ever had sixteen hundred for a March election?
Yeah, we've had close to three thousand.
For a March election?
It shall be not fewer than twenty-eight days, nor more than sixty days after the first session.
Somewhere in April or May.
I only say because, it's in the warrant article. I'm not advocating for it. I'm just saying that if we want to have a discussion, it would probably be at the next meeting to understand what you believe the ramifications of the default budget are, and then whether the board wants to push forward and.
I don't want to say, if there's something pressing, like you had said, like if we get the transportation budget, and it really is a fifty thousand dollar increase, then maybe we go to the voters and say, hey, we need this fifty thousand dollars for transportation. But I can't imagine why.
And that's really the biggest, the biggest impact, because that's not covered, it's covered in the budget, it wasn't covered in the default budget, so.
Three percent was covered.
Three percent, yeah, so.
Fuel will be large also.
So there, you know, there may be legitimate reasons to look at it. But I think that, you know, I think that we have to determine what the reasons are, and then move forward from that.
So maybe when we come back in April, you can give us the, when we see the impact and what the adjustments are, and maybe we'll know something more about buses by then.
I mean.
And have an informed discussion.
If they come back between two or three line items that have increased, irrelevant to what the budget was, but are going to be, you know, another hundred and eighty thousand dollars, so now you're looking at, trying to figure out three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Then we have, then I think that's.
Becomes a legitimate reason to have that discussion.
Article two, which was the new contract for the Litchfield Education Association, passed nine seventeen, seven thirty-four, as we heard Carolyn talk about earlier, so. That means for us, no negotiations until the fall of 2016, at the latest, I guess. Article three was twenty-five thousand, six hundred dollars for a part-time computer teacher position, which we had a brief discussion about, passed nine eighty-one to six sixty-eight. Article four was fifty thousand dollars into the building maintenance capital reserve fund, which takes us up from seven eighty-seven, or whatever the remaining money was. That was one thousand two hundred and fifty-eight to three ninety-six, passed. And then last was thirty-six thousand, seven hundred dollars for security equipment, which passed eleven sixty-two to four ninety-five. Mr. York noted that, once you get past the budget, everything up to the last article increased in the number of people that supported it, which conventional wisdom has always been, as you go later in the ballot, people start voting no, because they realize they voted yes on all the ones above, so.
That's why they, nice enough for the school, one top of the town.
Yeah, vote here first. Vote the yellow one first. So anybody have any comments on the election results?
I just have one, because town was the same way. Take like article one that failed, that's going to tax impact just thirty-two cents for a thousand. Correct? But it's roughly the same price for the default budget.
Yeah, misleading, probably thirty-two cents. The difference is only like six cents or something, right?
It's not even that high, is it?
I don't know. Or is it nine cents per a thousand? It's like thirteen cents, maybe. Is that right?
I think it's a dime for nine hundred thousand.
A dime for nine, just one cent for a hundred thousand?
Yeah.
Yes, it's less than that.
Like, the town was written similar, too, that the impact was three dollars and something.
Which is the total impact.
Is this legally, is that how it has to be presented?
Well, the people voted to have it on, so we have to have it on. That was, that was last year or the year before, was the town vote to add that.
Right, but that's, that's a total impact.
And, and I think we can affect that if Mr. Markowitz would project, and I'm not saying you did anything wrong, if we decide we're going to project a two hundred thousand dollar fund balance, you reduce that tax impact by that amount, correct?
Yes.
But if we forecast a zero, because we know we have a tight budget, and we don't want to set the expectation you're going to have two hundred thousand, or three hundred thousand, or whatever that number is, then you can affect what that number is by what you think you're going to roll over for the next year. In our case, the twenty-three cents reflects zero, correct, for a fund balance?
Correct. Because the expectation is that you have done such a wonderful job in your budget development that you will spend down. So many wildcard factors, and that is very difficult, as it is to project state and federal revenue almost a year out.
Yes. And I'm not implying that anything we didn't. It's kind of a shift, because the prior business administrator always used to forecast two hundred thousand dollars. That was his forecast. That was his mantra for doing the budget, and, or for doing the tax impact. The problem is, if you don't make the two hundred thousand, you make fifty thousand, let's say, then you're, you've said it's seven cents, and it really turns out to be seventeen cents, or whatever the right number is.
Again, as you know, I know the previous BA well, and this is not a criticism, but question could also come up as to if you're, if you are forecasting that before the budget is even implemented, then why did you do it in the first place?
I didn't say it was the correct practice, I just said it was the practice.
I was going to say that we're going to need everything that we're projecting in September, I mean, in November, and then, as you know, in September, we're going to change those numbers anyways, with the information we get from the state. And maybe at that time is when you can take a look at projecting.
I think the most helpful would be the difference. If I vote yes, my tax should increase X percent, if I vote no, I assume.
That it's zero.
That's what I'm saying. Because you look at it and says, oh. It's thirty-two cents. So they vote no, but they're still going up twenty-four cents. I mean, it's silly.
You probably could, you probably could put that on there.
I don't know, I mean, I think we control what it says and how it says.
The article in the warrant article said that we want to see the tax impact on the warrants.
And the impact is the difference.
So we can show the impact, to me, it's reasonable to say, okay, here's your operating budget as recommended, and here is your tax impact on the default, should that not be approved. I don't see why that wouldn't fall.
You could even say, tax, article passes tax impact twenty-three cents, or whatever, thirty-two cents. Tax impact article fails, and put it on all of them. So on one, it's four cents and zero, because if you, you know, but on the budget, you might have thirty-two and.
I think it was only, I don't have it in front of you, but I think it was only like a three cent, but, three cent difference or something.
Yeah, it was pretty small.
It was short money. And I just think if the public sees it that way, that probably more.
The assumption is zero. I think you're right.
Right, I think it's a good point. Something we certainly should look at.
File that away for next year.
It's already in.
I had a conversation with Kevin Smith, who's the, he knows it, because he's the town manager in Lundry. He was all confused by ours, because the town had this, and then ours. And he couldn't understand how it was thirty-three cents, because technically his would be negative, because Lundry has so many more articles that.
The budget was.
The budget impact is technically negative, because the prior budget is so high in one-time expenditures. So it was all confusing.
It doesn't bode well. Never mind the language that you end up having to use, that people, I think, just looked for the number, and then they looked at the tax impact, and that's the way they wrote it.
I don't know if you could make that assumption on this past vote. Because they looked at all the expenditures, overwhelmingly voted yes. Yet they didn't support the budget, which absolutely makes no sense.
Did the same thing on town side, too.
Yeah, they did. I mean, every spending, everything spending got approved, except the budget, which is just.
But it was a way of, it was a way of getting a teacher contract, investing in quality teaching over time, from my perspective, but also mitigating the tax impact at the same time.
But I think.
And I think, I think for several hundred people, that was the rationale, that without a teacher's contract, you know.
There's other problems.
The quality of education would have been seriously impacted, potentially, and this was the trade-off. Let's hope it's a one-year pattern, but.
Town is on their second year of default.
Oh, they've been, I think it's three years in a row.
And unfortunately, what tends to happen is that gap grows.
They make their default budget their operations budget, so I don't, I don't know why they're surprised, because they remove everything out of their default budget, you know?
Enrollment for February.
And just for fun, I printed out the March enrollment from last year for comparison. The numbers for, for the, the February enrollment are pretty consistent to the pattern from last year. We lost over the summer, during the school year, we gained some back. Pleased to note that the pre-K program is staying relatively flat, which is a good sign for future special education. And then in fact, we're up four over the year, and that's come primarily at the, no, seven over the year, primarily at the high school. So, you know, a good trend. I think the original number of fourteen thirty-seven was pretty much on what we anticipated for ADM. So we may have, you know, a little bit of wiggle room. But we could also, you know, drop down from now till the end of June and be right back there for ADM. Kindergarten and first grade registrations of forty-seven and sixty-nine for February, third week of February, two, last year it was actually forty-seven, same number for kindergarten, and sixty-one for grade one registrations. But the March registrations were fifty-one and sixty-eight. So you can see that we've gone sixty-eight, sixty-nine, with four weeks left to go, three weeks left to go, four weeks left to go for the end of March, once we're pretty much running there. So I, pleased.
We ended up in the seventies.
Yeah. And I believe the number for the grade one class would actually have to be the first whole number that would round up to twenty-one, which I think is ninety-three, four classes. Now, would be eighty, eighty.
Eighty-four.
Eighty-four. So we're still a significant way from, from having to worry about that.
We're right in the middle, because otherwise you've got to go down to like sixty-three. You're twelve over and twelve under, if you're in the seventies.
At least it's flattening off, though, it's not dropping still.
It'll be interesting to see where kindergarten ends up, because we're at sixty now, we're at forty-seven.
Fifty-one?
No, we're at forty-seven this year.
You said fifty-one?
Fifty-one was last year.
Fifty-one was last year, but March. Forty-seven was the exact same number, the exact same week this year.
And Realtor friends tell me that the market in Litchfield is significantly more active than it was in terms of sales than it was this time last year. Any committee reports? Budget, no, didn't meet. Technology, I think you're going to cover. I missed the meeting, but that was on Monday.
Yes. I'm going to be sending your invitation to you.
I already got a new one. Yeah, I got the next one from Kyle. And I blocked it on my schedule, I had it far enough in advance, it could block out some time. We already talked to wrestling funding, so we're going to move on to the school district calendar, and we're almost a one hour behind. It's Derek Smiles over there.
That was an unrealistic timeline, anyway.
Yeah, one of the things I'm going to be reviewing on the agenda is the timeline to send more reasonable. I looked at it for tonight, I'm like, who would have guessed?
Trish is looking down and smiling.
It all started when we handed out all those awards for the robotics team that kept sticking together, we lost time there, you know?
Yeah.
I'll have to talk to the person who makes. I'll have to talk to the person who makes those to make them less sticky.
I have no control over the paper company.
So, last time we met, we talked about November. Not having school on the fourth. Or election day. But it's still a white square.
And it.
And I'm not objecting to having it, I'm just trying to understand the difference between that day and regular voting day, whatever it is in March.
Why can't we just move the parentage conference on the fourth?
I think it's timed with the end of the quarter.
So, they don't have to report, but they still have a good idea.
For which one?
The parentage conference on fourteen.
It's the timing, timing of the quarter and.
Well, actually, it would probably allow them, uh, they ended up, you know, spreading it across many other days. They said, you know, so it gives them another, another day. But do we have a teacher's, just a teacher's workshop day that we could move to that day and move from? I mean, we have a, I mean, this year we had a teacher's workshop, but I don't seem to see anything.
We have the March tenth day.
The March tenth day.
We also have the June twenty-third day. The teacher workshop day. So, what the, what's scheduled for June eighteenth. The last, the last day for students is the, is a half day. And then we have a full day for teacher workshops. Quite honestly, Dr. He and I have talked about the usefulness of a day at the end of the year. And a day earlier in the year is, is often much more useful. I was told that one of the reasons for having it with the use of blizzard bags was it was insurance, blizzard bag insurance to some extent, that if we got seventy-eight at one point in time, that it might be taken into account on that last day, so teachers would not do their blizzard bags for not. Don't know the validity of that story or not. But certainly would be worth having a conversation about moving that last day of the year as a teacher workshop day to the voting day on November fourth.
And the kids would get off on the eighteenth instead?
With no school days, seventeenth with no school days, no snow days, yeah, no school days.
We have a new contract, part of our new contract says we're going to negotiate a sidebar agreement on blizzard bags.
If we decide to include, to continue them.
If the board decides to.
When are we going to have that discussion, so then you can either have the discussion one way or the other?
There's nothing that says you couldn't make a calendar decision and then have the sidebar conversation happen, if that the board wishes.
So, do the teachers.
I got the sense that this is more about wanting to know what the strategy is and not be surprised by it. And I think for the second year in a row, we've communicated that we will use blizzard bags, we'll use them judiciously, the number of blizzard bags will never, blizzard bags will not be the first option, blizzard bags will be. So, we went two days, January second and third of, of school cancellations, and then blizzard bag, blizzard bag, now the next one was a school cancellation. So, we're three days canceled and two days of blizzard bags. And we, we planned for three blizzard bags, so we have a day. And from my, from my perspective, I think that's, if we're going to use blizzard bags, that's the way that we should use them, that they're not a first option, that they don't replicate the quality of instruction and the amount of instruction in regular school day. And I think that's pretty consistent with, with the board's perspective as well.
Inevitably, you know, you're probably looking at the end of school around the twenty-sixth without blizzard bags.
Really how valuable twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth.
And that's, that's the argument.
Which means.
That's the argument, quite.
Is going to create, the biggest.
I know, at least one other district is starting to look at blizzard bags after this winter.
Yeah, because you, you run into, I mean, I don't know where we, you said three days so far have been canceled?
Yeah.
Three days that have to be made up or three days total?
Three days total have been lost. And two days.
Were made up, so we're negative one right now.
No, we're negative three, because we used three, lost three, and we used two blizzard bags.
So, we missed five.
Missed five days altogether.
So, it's the, it's the diff, you're talking about the difference, not the sum. Because we, in the past, we've ended up to keep our graduation date, having the seniors come in on a Saturday before.
Right, it's jumping up the agenda a little bit, but right now, the last day of school is Monday, the twenty-third. The state regulations allow for five fewer days for seniors, which would mean we would have to have them attend graduation on the Monday, except that our seniors have to do senior projects, which are a significant out-of-class experience, and they have to attend the evening of senior project events, which is pretty much a half-day school, which I, I think you can, you can argue the, the number of hours required that they have to spend independently can still be counted towards their educational process. And then you throw in, you know, a minimum of two hours on the presentation. I think that has been used to, to count as a day in the, in the past. And I think that, that's an argument that if we had to, we could make with the DOE.
And I think we've got more than enough hours at CHS. It's usually not an hour issue.
No.
Whether it's the last day or the seniors.
The actual schedule is a thousand eighty-eight hours, when I think nine fifty is, is required. And then you back out the, a couple of later arrivals and things like that. But they're still well over, even after all that's taken into consideration. But interestingly, that piece about the seniors is still a backdrop to full days. Even if you're well over the hours, that's the minimum you can do. But I think the argument of the, at least a full day's instructional time for senior projects is, is, is more than plausible. So, I think we're okay on that.
For the calendar, do you want to, do you need to have to coordinate in terms of moving that day for next year? Or is it just a pure schedule setting, and the board says we want the PD day to be on November fourth, and you guys make it happen?
Well, the other one's on the tenth, though, which is also voting day. So, are we adding that day?
Oh, we're moving the one for at the end of June.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Moving the one to the end of June.
And, and the other thing that, that I think that, I think that we should go to a two-hour delay instead of four days, I think we should do three days. And across all the schools again. As long as, as long as they're back to the, as long as there's a detailed plan that you approve that shows that it's not just a late arrival and we're benefiting on that.
If you were to go to three, the one that I think to look at is the March one. It's, it's six school days after a full PD day.
Is there any NIASC, does the NIASC work come up for the high school?
It's starting, it's starting to ramp up.
That would be my only concern, if that was the original intent of those days, was for NIASC work to get done.
Well, I mean, you can take one from the fall if they need them in the spring.
Well, these are aligned with Nashua's because of the.
Hudson's, actually.
Hudson's because of the.
CTE programs.
Yeah, but, but how many students are we talking about that head over there that are impacted by that? If we take one away?
Well.
Thirty.
For half a day?
I think we budget for twenty-eight.
Well, I'm just, it's a round number.
It's a round number. It's a significant number of students. And, and you would be surprised at how often they're negatively impacted, because you've got all of our scheduled things, and our scheduled things don't align with theirs, whether it's our science kneecaps or our kneecaps in the fall, or, you know, whether next year it's, it's going to be when they do their smarter balance, you know. They, they miss a substantial amount. So, whenever we can, can align our stuff with theirs, so much the better.
So, you're saying that we need to do four, because they're not going to have something that day?
No, I must say we, we have to do four, but I, I think if we did four this year, and they found it useful, I agree with Mr. Miller, the high school is coming into some significant work for NIASC. And it will start to become, I mean, I've been asking all three schools to focus on curriculum aligned to their goals, to the district initiatives, to, and, but more and more NIASC work is going to creep into the agenda of the high school. And it will be, it will be far more than two hours in that next year.
Is that the recertification test?
It's ten years, yeah. And I mean, we did the five-year deal, and then we got the, you get, I think you get recertified for five years, but you get re-inspected, I think, at ten years.
Ten-year site visit cycle with a five-year interim report with substantive reports, anywhere in between to, if you impact anything that, that has ramifications for your accreditation.
I just read somebody lost one. I don't know what it was for.
Hollis was advertising some grief about building and that sort of thing. It was, NIASC's report was being cited in the, in the issues that were coming up.
So, I guess I would recommend, John, that we leave four and stay aligned, particularly if the high. I mean, I, I don't know that we want to do four at all schools, if there's a plan. I mean, I think that's okay. I don't know what heartache it causes on GMS parents to be short, to have a late arrival, based upon whatever they do for daycare they may need in the morning versus I can just go to the bus stop and go.
If we kept this to pretty much what is proposed here, which is a duplicate, except throw in moving the end-of-year day to November fourth. If we could give me to the ninth to reach out to the schools to see if there's anything that, that I'm not aware of, and see if we can come back with a recommendation on, on that change, and then go from there.
Yeah, I don't think it's a rush to get it.
I think the April day could be viable for the other schools as well, especially with, I mean, the Common Core is still very, very new. So, I think at the end of the year, it wouldn't hurt them to have a professional development day where the grade-level teams can get together, talk about what works, what's working well, but not working well, that type of.
Yeah, no, I know. We've started some of those discussions already. Maybe the May day, the early release of, sorry, the two-hour delay opening on April fifteenth. For GMS and LMS, move them up to three. But they, they'll have the March tenth day.
Yeah.
As a full day, so.
I mean, the big, I mean, the key is that there's just as many educational issues in GMS and LMS as there is at CHS. And I think that giving just CHS extra days minimizes the importance of that we, that there's just as many issues for the other two schools to deal with, and we should try to make the, the time that's necessary for that.
The counterbalancing argument is that the high school is way over the required hours. The other two schools are over, but they're not way over, so.
Yeah, but irrelevant doesn't really matter, because they're going to go a hundred, those two schools are going to go a hundred and eighty days.
That's true.
The only, the only issue in the high school is how much hot water you're going to get in, because you have to move graduation. And, you know, that's your burden to carry, you know.
What provision is there for parents who can't, can't delay going to work? You know, if there's a, if there's a late arrival, is there like a before-school program that they can bring their kids to on, on those late arrival, I mean, yeah, late arrival?
It's, it's no different than a late school day for snow. They just got to work it out.
Same two hour, same two-hour delay. That, that's one of the reasons that we do it that way, so, so parents don't have to change plans. They know that if we have a, a two-hour delay for snow or a two-hour delay for this, whatever arrangements they've made, they only have to make one sort of arrangement because of time.
And there's plenty of notice on like the snow day.
By the way, it was a great call the other day when you were, one of the only few schools in town. I won't tell you what superintendent, but, but I do know one superintendent that has sworn off two, two weather stations because they led him astray the other day when they were closed. And he was quite embarrassed as he was getting razzed about the being shut down.
We've been there.
We have been there, we have been there, but, but it was nice to see the shoe on the other, on someone else's foot, so.
So, I think we can.
It's not a matter of if, it's just when.
And how many times?
And how many times?
I think if you can.
So far, so far, we've been on a pretty good streak, but you know it's going to come to an end, so just.
They're talking about some places north of here getting five-plus inches tonight.
Tonight, yeah.
I think if you can bring that back.
Okay.
We can deal with that on.
So, I think we're looking at GMS and LMS being added to the fifteenth. And then the other question would be what the board wants to do with, do they go, would we put them in on the eighteenth as, as well? I think they would be pleased to add the, the one day in April. Keep the high school as the extra half day, because their NIASC work is ramping up. And have some conversations about moving the last day of June, the, the teacher day, to Tuesday, November fourth. Better use of the, of the time.
Is, is the twenty-sixth of November, is that part of the contract?
I believe it is.
Thanksgiving? Because I remember going to school right up to that Wednesday.
I think the issue is attendance is greatly reduced.
It's, you know, so you think it's sort of like the week before Labor Day, when kids miss like four or five days of school.
Depending, yeah.
Nationally, you have more families traveling in Thanksgiving break than at any time of the year.
And, and I think that Tuesday night is the new Wednesday.
Yeah.
Where people used to leave Wednesday at some point during the day. Now, people are trying to get out Tuesday night. I don't think it's contractually required, I think we just.
Well, I know the start of school is.
And, and what you end up with, I think, is you end up with, because you have reduced attendance, you get a lot of movies or special projects, it's, it's not necessarily a great instructional day.
It's, it's hard to teach half a class.
Yeah.
So, you can't start anything new, you can't. So, it is, it is tough to manage. I'm just getting anticipation of the next agenda, I don't start moving.
Are you getting up your technology?
He's going to use technology. And it's going to be sound, apparently. He'd be in charge.
Do I need to stay for this?
Yeah, this one's yours, by the way. Where are you sitting, Brian? Are you sitting over here?
Do I have to move?
Where are you planning to sit?
I saw you got your picture.
Am I in the way?
Different vantage point than everybody else.
I know, it's great, I said, I'm going to get my, my phone up.
I've always found it ironic that technology involves you crawling around on the floor. No matter what you're doing, at some point, you're going to be on your hands and knees on the floor, tracing a cable, plugging something in, trying to figure out what's going on.
Leave that to my husband. And after tomorrow, I won't be able to get on the floor for a while. Be on the couch.
You better have some technology then.
I have my computer right next to me, so if my, my board has any questions, they can all email me. And it's something to keep me busy from going crazy at home. I honestly will be checking my email all that week, so. It's like withdrawal. Because my husband said, what are you going to do if you can't go to a board meeting or something? I said, go through withdrawal.
I'll watch it on TV.
I'm missing the budget committee, I want to. I kind of wanted to see who was going to be chairs.
Oh, that could be an interesting.
Yeah.
More budget committee.
Yeah.
If I can get up and walk around, I'll take my walker with me, come on in.
You don't think it'll be in trouble?
I'm having my knee operated on Wednesday, Friday.
Oh, no.
I'll be able to.
Can't imagine.
Can't be available, you're supposed to be.
About a week.
Taking it.
No, it's not bad at all.
Easy.
Oh, that's responding, I have a meniscus tear, but it's not huge.
Yeah, no, it's no issue, I don't think.
Yeah.
But I'll have my computer near me, so I'll be checking my email all week, so if you have any questions, feel free. Even if you get the out-of-office reply, I'll still answer you.
Okay, great, thank you.
Are you skipping out?
No, I would miss this for the world.
He just didn't want it projected on his retina. Put your glasses on, Frank, we'll be able to see the slide right there.
Aren't you, aren't you going to sit next to?
It's not at the, it can't be at the Dollar Store if it's three for two dollars.
No, it's that one that, it's not the one that everything's a dollar.
Oh.
The other one. The Dollar Store or the?
Dollar Tree.
Dollar Tree. The plastic.
So they're really throwing, you're thinking about two weeks out of it.
Mine, I, when I traveled last week, got there, hotel, set up my laptop, and I went like this, and the lens is popped out of my bag.
I had one lens in, I'm going, boy, these aren't very good, my eyes are all messed up, I realized the other half.
That's why they're a dollar, or that's why they're 67 cents.
We had, we had some dollars waiting for us. So I figured this is the next best thing.
High value.
Somebody I know that used to be a plumber, used to leave them all the time, cause he would be working, and then fill out paperwork, and he'd send them down to somebody's house, and he'd realize, when he drove away, or he went into the Dollar Store and found a pair that he liked, and he said to the guy, do you have any more of these? And the guy goes, oh, I think I can hang on. He comes in the back, he comes out with a box, he goes, how many does he want? And he goes, the box.
Yeah.
They went on the dash of his truck.
Yeah.
He said, when I get down in the last row, I go and buy another box. But for a buck apiece.
They actually make cheater safety glasses.
They do?
I saw it the other day at Home Depot. You get 175.
Cheetah?
Cheetah.
Cheetah. I was gonna say, you gotta like grass growing on your glasses.
As Frank said, cheetah.
Cheetah.
In my car.
That's right, Massachusetts.
It's cause you're from New York.
I, yeah, but I don't have that accent, see? People can't tell I'm from Massachusetts.
Is, is the timer on?
For the record, he's already used five minutes of his timer.
Twenty minutes.
I'm not gonna say much, actually. So, I was impressed by the board to come back with a, a vision of use of technology for the district by the end of March, and here we are. Some of this is built on things, oh, sorry, that you've seen before, and some is new. Much of it comes from a session that I attended at the National Secret Service Conference, two or three of them I was able to follow, a technology strand I really looked at versus state-of-the-art at this point in time. So the model I'm gonna show you is, is, is a model of particular functions. It's gonna cite a platform, but the platform is not intended to be a recommendation, it's more of the instructional model itself on a platform. So, here's the vision. We start off with a slide that you've seen before, the quote from Papert 99, the model that said, learn while you're in school, while you're young in school, as you will apply during your lifetime, is no longer tenable. We need to develop students who know how to learn, who know how to problem solve, who know how to, or who aren't being trained to do things and respond to known problems, because the problems that they're gonna face in their lifetime, we can't even imagine what they're gonna be. So, the ability to learn, the ability to develop problem solvers becomes paramount. And the goal is no longer to, to teach, resulting in students who aren't learned as much as use that learning to become skilled at learning, so. This again is a, is a slide that you've seen before with one small adaptation. High expectations for all students in the learning, task, time, and support to help all achieve the high levels. More dependent, more collaborative learning, and digital literacy layered on top of strong traditional literacy and numeracy skills. Those strong traditional skills are the absolute baseline for this other work, it's not a replacement for. Top quote especially I'd like, it was a, from a 2003 book called "The Mavara's Laptop: Human Needs and New Computing Technologies." The old computing was about what computers could do, the new computing is what, about what users can do. Successful technologies are those that are in harmony with users' needs. We used to teach computer programming in high school, so everybody who used a computer was gonna need to program. Not so. Then it was, oh, you're gonna have to know an awful lot of files and configurations and, you know, batch files, and yeah, no, not so much. Right? So it's really about using the technology to enhance the human function, in this case the learning function. And the technology is merely a tool that, that, that people will get fluent at. And if you have kids or grandchildren who've had an iPad from the time that they were three, you see that fluency, but it's not fluency that's often applied to learning in a formal context. So they have a fluency, but it's not necessarily the right skill set for the learning enhancement that, that they will need down the road.
I would argue that video game players, some of the same, you know, they can manipulate the controller, whatever controller it is, and shows you the, you know, the repetition piece of it and understanding it, but it doesn't necessarily translate into.
I was watching a lecture from a, a very distinguished professor, why are we seeing such huge increases in IQ over the last 40 years? And a lot of it has to do with the amount of hypothesizing that, that we do. If you think of the amount of hypothesizing that occurred in normal life for average people in the twenties, it was virtually nonexistent. We have kids hypothesizing, well, what they would do if they go this, that, the other, and then this, based on what happened in these other three areas. So that thinking strategically and hypothesizing, and then, you know, taking a no-risk action because I'll just hit F5 and reboot, is something that, that can create very innovative minds, so I would agree. So why technology? Student engagement. Teachers can effectively use more visual and interactive learning resources and engage in a collaborative environment, although interesting, we're gonna see some stuff later, but it's very simply used in technology that's been very popular. And it allows for individualization of content, context, or, or process, including remediation and enrichment and acceleration, potentially. There are some things that kids will practice repeatedly in a gaming environment, like map building. It's not a bad thing. It's a bad thing if that's the only thing you use the technology for, but it's not a bad thing. If you're learning to kick a soccer ball, the wall never misses, it misses every time. And the ability to respond intelligently to a student response with increasingly more adaptive software is, is gonna be one of the major gains in the next three to five years. So why technology? Because you can focus on mastery, because you can vary time and location and develop an, an ownership of learning. When the high school teachers talk about what a great experience the senior project is, you know, and they said, you don't seem to be supportive of it, and I said, well, here's my thing. If you think it's the best part of high school, why do we do it only once in four years? Why do we only have self-directed learning? One time? They get 24 credits, most of them have 27 credits, 28 credits. And the only non-credit-bearing experiences that were required to have in high school is one that, that many of them say was the most valuable learning experience for them. So why is that? Extending the student's learning day. But in this, there's a difference between one-to-one computing, where you go to school and you pull the laptop out of the laptop cart, you sit down and you play with the buzzer going, and you put the laptop back, and actually having your own device that you take with your points for each other. Why technology? Strengths in communication and partnerships with parents. Parent portal, all three of the vendors that we've seen in the last three weeks have an, an app-based approach to parent information, parent portal. So the login is completely web-based, but you can go in and you can see the courses that your kid's in. Single sign-on, you've got one kid at each school, one sign-on. Pick on the students you wanna see. You wanna see attendance, you wanna see whether they've been absent, whether they're retarded, what their grades are in each subject area, what assignments are coming up, what notices a teacher's posted for them, all there. And one of them, in fact, you can, all three of them, you can get push notifications, I wanna know when it's updated, or I wanna be updated every three days, or every five days, or every two weeks. Or you can go into one of them and say, when my son gets a grade below a C, I want a push notification letting me know that there's new information on there, and I can, I can take my cell phone and go find out what that is. My daughter, on the other hand, I wanna know when her grade is less than an A, because she's a different student. And you have that flexibility, that you will get real-time grades. You hit, the teacher hits view and make it public, that push notification goes.
So how does it work now with, with, with Edline? They, they go in, they're updating the information on pretty much daily or every other day or stuff.
The teacher's inputted daily, but it's only every.
Two weeks.
Two weeks, then it's manually turned over.
Right.
The.
But this would be, this would be different.
GradeQuick or something?
They use GradeQuick. Well, there's, there's three pieces. They've got a student information system, they've got GradeQuick, and we have a, a common platform for grading, which is a great thing, because if we're starting with different platforms and people are just putting their grades in Edline, that's a whole different challenge. But everybody uses GradeQuick, they enter in Edline, and then every two weeks, it gets rolled over. And two weeks, it quakes to the stipend that we pay the person to roll it over. We can roll it over every day if we wanted to increase the stipend 10 times.
Or find a volunteer.
Yeah, or find a volunteer. So, very user-friendly and allows the, the tightening after the communication. All of them, by the way, when you go into the parent portal and you see your child's stuff, there's immediate class, so as you look down, here are the courses and here are the grades, and here's the email address for the teacher, click, done, you know? You can send it to, to say, I received an assignment, or an assignment is missing, or, you know, so they're all pretty sophisticated in tightening that communication and making parents a, a more equal partner in education, which is an important piece.
There's 107 students at Campbell right now are happy that they're graduating.
So, we're looking at a web-based student information system. The existing one is not web-based, you have to be inside our follow-up firewall to use it, which is very inconvenient. A curriculum management functionality that has managed the curriculum documents and even handles the learning management functionality. Any of you have taken grad courses or anything like that where you've used Blackboard with an online learning environment? They're getting pretty sophisticated. What gets rolled into newer student information systems as part of the base fee isn't, is kind of like a stripped-down version of, of Blackboard, or the versions that I was working on in about 2000. You can email, you can post, you can have threaded discussions, you've got an, an area for each course. You can grade in the gradebook or you can grade in the course. You hit it, you know, and it, and it, it goes there. And then, it has to be capable of reporting standards and competency-based grades and have a communication portable. So that's, those are the, the major features that we're looking at. So what technology do the teachers need? They needed something that's portable, open within the school, and, and it's within the classroom rather than outside the school. Now, the, the presentation that I saw, I actually have at home a little device from Netter called Push to TV, which I have configured, but I have a conflict in my configuration for my Y-Di. Otherwise, I could pick my tablet up off these, off this and walk around the room and doing this PowerPoint presentation in a way that's much more natural to teaching. Another teacher stuck here, talking like this, but a teacher who's going around, trying to keep people on task, trying to motivate the little ones, hitting the PowerPoint, or writing with your digital link as you're doing it. And the functional cost of that, and there's one in room 145 now, because we're testing it, is about $55 to free that up.
And it's just something you plug into the Blackboard?
Yeah. It's a, it's a USB in for power supply and an HDMI.
Chromebooks or what they're called.
Chromebooks.
Chromebooks, yeah.
By the way, it has to support the integration of text, video, audio.
Set it to the side.
Right, no, go ahead. So I'm gonna show you a, a little clip, and it does have an English accent, because apparently the OS is not leading the world in this. In fact, all three of these clips, two, the last two are from Australia, and the, the first one is a British accent, and the last one that you're gonna see, the three minutes of, is from a teacher from Austria. So clearly, we're not leading the world in, in, in how to do this, but I did attend a session with a guy who's a tech director of Cincinnati County Day School, which has been doing one-one computing since 1996, first, first school in the country to do it. And the session was called "You Can't Have It All." And they use Office 365, Windows 8 tablets, and the platform that they have is expensive because the price point to do what it is they want them to do is still very high. That price point is gonna come down significantly. So I'm gonna show you what they use, and, but what we're talking about really is the functionality, as opposed to the platform per se. The more we can do in the, in the student information system, and not through OneNote, for example, the much cheaper the tablet that you can purchase. Right now, to get something that will do all of this is a minimum of $1,000. If you can, if you think of what happens in universities who are laptop-required, they don't use, they can use OneNote, but the machine can be not much cheaper. So in terms of the cost and sustainability of it, the more of this that we can get in the learning, in the student information system and not in the software, the more affordable the device is gonna be. So, here's a little bit of information on OneNote as a platform.
Just speaking to that whatever happened.
I can do that. I haven't started the video, so we've got caught up in all those wires.
I know. You know, it's interesting in my, in my college searches and investigations, nobody wants a tablet. They'll say that's not supported, Windows 8 not supported, Apple iPad not supported. But you can bring it and try it. It's like, if you bring it, you are, you're into the wild, wild west of technology on your own, even if you do turn it sideways to do it.
And that's where I was until I got this, which is a functional laptop using Windows 8, has that functionality, you slide the button over here and it becomes a tablet. You lift this off, and it's literally a tablet, it's barely bigger than an iPad. And so this and OneNote convinced me, I'm now taking all my meeting notes with OneNote. Not because I'm great at it, because I'm gonna force myself to learn how to use it well.
One of the interesting challenges of 21st century classrooms is managing how work is submitted. How do we get our work to the teachers? And how do they mark that work, given that it may have to be sent via email or uploaded to a server? Microsoft OneNote allows us to save notebooks onto server spaces or in the cloud, using services like SkyDrive or even SharePoint. One of the things that we're seeing in more and more schools is making collaborative use of OneNote notebooks to share resources between teachers and students. So here's one possible setup we're seeing schools use. A teacher may create a notebook with read and write access, but they will place that notebook on the network. So let's say this is a math teacher. The math teacher will have a maths master notebook, including their curriculum, stored in.
Now, the British term curriculum includes down to the materials given to students, handouts, things like that.
In a place where they and perhaps other teachers will be able to edit it and build curriculum. It's important to note that the teacher has read and write access to that notebook, because they need to create a curriculum. However, the teacher also puts it in a place which ensures the students have read-only access. That means that students can view the entire curriculum the teacher has created, but they can't change any of that curriculum. They can't edit, for example. They are, however, able to copy items out of that notebook if they need to. In addition to read-only access to the master notebook, students have their own notebook for mathematics. This one here might be James's notebook.
It's a good thing there's only four notebooks.
And this one might be Kelly's notebook. And this one might be Tim. And this one might be Jessica.
I think you got the pattern.
Each of these notebooks allow read and write access, but only for the owner of the notebook. Students wouldn't have read and write access to anyone else's notebook. So that means that James isn't going to be able to open Kelly's notebook, and Kelly isn't going to be able to access Tim's. There's no way that they can access each other's notebooks.
Till, for a day, till they swap passwords.
Workflow for a student. And this one might be Jessica.
I think you got the pattern.
Each of these notebooks allow read-and-write access, but only for the owner of the notebook. Students wouldn't have read-and-write access to anyone else's notebook. So, that means that James isn't going to be able to open Kelly's notebook, and Kelly isn't going to be able to access Tim's. There's no way that they can access each other's notebooks.
Till, for a day, till they swap passwords.
The workflow for a student, let's say James, is that he would open his own maths workbook in OneNote, and he would also open the teacher's master notebook. So, James now has two maths notebooks open. This allows him to see the teacher's master curriculum files, which the teacher would add to as the course progresses, and his own private workbook that he can work in. In other words, what this is really creating for teachers is a seamless way to deliver curriculum to their students. If a teacher is at home and creates a new page, they can put it into the master. This might be a new piece of curriculum. It would go into the master notebook because the teacher knows that all the students have that open, and they would be able to read it, but not edit it. Then, when the teacher comes into the classroom and asks James and Kelly and Tim and Jessica to get that piece of curriculum, each individual student would just copy and paste it into their workbook. So, they copy and paste the new material across into their workbook. Once that piece of work is copied into their own individual workbook, they are able to edit it and do the mathematics work that is required because they have read-and-write access. To provide feedback, teachers can open up the student workbooks. The best way to do this is have all your students' workbooks open, in this case, James and Kelly and Tim and Jessica. This means as soon as James does any work on his page-
Each student's notebook looks- And all the teacher tries to do is click from student to student to student. Like the old language labs where the teacher could listen in and then he'd give a student they wanted to.
This is the teacher's OneNote layout with the colored tabs across the top. As you can see, the teacher would have the master open here, and then they would have James's workbook open, as well as Kelly's and Tim's and Jessica's. And even if the teacher was at home and wanted to check some of James's work, they'd just click here to open it up. From there, they could annotate on his notebook pages using the pen tool. They can insert an audio file if they wanted to give some spoken feedback, or even record a video file if they wanted to relay feedback that way. This idea of using notebooks for powerful collaboration is an amazing way that Microsoft OneNote can be used in schools.
I'm gonna skip over the ones on Windows 8 tablets and Office 365. Office 365, by the way, comes free, students, we have a Microsoft license. From my experience, Microsoft is horrible at marketing, but they get people hooked on their products relatively well. And one of the ways they're doing that with Office 365 is that for any school district that has a license with them, which is dirt cheap, students get that for up to five machines. The subscription for that as a private citizen is $100 a year. But it is a way of marketing, even if it is a lost leader.
For college students, it's $100 for four years.
Yeah, the student edition. So, these are the sorts of things, by digital link, we basically mean a tablet that has writeability where you take your stylus and it runs. And both internal and cloud information storage. I'm not a big fan of cloud for the sake of cloud, but in this situation, it allows for some very interesting things, like the teacher sitting at home can actually watch what the student is writing in their notebook in their home, 8 o'clock at night. So, you don't have to be inside the firewall to communicate back and forth and share those notebooks. So, what resources? Well, increasingly, free digital information is gonna become available. I've mentioned CK12 to you before. If you look over here on the right-hand side, if you go over here, you can list a series of documents. They have content that's been created. It's free. You sign up for it. I have a colleague who's written a lot of their high school chemistry chapters. And you can go in there and download it and send it out as a PDF. You can keep it as an interactive document. You can make it web-based, and you can edit it. It's in an open platform. As long as you don't save it as a PDF. Once you save it, well, you can literally go in and say, "Well, I don't wanna use that picture of the fall. I wanna use a picture from here." Or, you know, if we're talking about a marsh, "I wanna use a picture of this pond around the corner from the school, and I'm wanting to change this sentence to this sentence," and then you just freeze it. And you have essentially a free book. So, I can show that to you, but I actually downloaded everything they had on middle school physical science, and the document itself is over 700 pages long. So, clearly, some work has to go into deciding which of this aligns and which doesn't. But once it's created, it's free. Khan Academy, this is an area where Common Core is actually gonna be very useful. Not that it isn't in other areas. But right now, if I went to Assistants, which I've showed you before, we wouldn't have free online assessments. The problem is you've got teachers in Massachusetts writing stuff to Massachusetts standards, and they have their question sets for grade four, which are different from New Hampshire, which are different from... And so, you're replicating all this effort. Now, if you go to Khan Academy, you can just say, "Sixth grade, US, same standards." So, if you wanna go in and see an example, you know, so if you go to Learn, you can... You wanna go to Math? What grade level do you wanna do? Do you wanna do grade six math? Right? And then, if so, what do you wanna do? What do you wanna to look at? And then, you click on whatever that is, and it's really simple stuff. Here's my learning progression. Right? And it pulls up a very-
Are these full, I mean, I'm sort of new at Khan Academy. Are these full lesson plans and full programs for grades?
Most of these are very short clips.
Too short. Really the whole thing?
So, this is a tool on moving. So, you can literally make, go through and, so, talk about extending the day.
Yeah.
So, your kid is in grade four, and you're working on fractions. And one of the, I think, more helpful aspects of Common Core is the way it uses a number line to teach concepts. So, if you're struggling with it, you just go do, you can watch the videos many times as you want. You can get, you know, aligned questions as much as you want. And so, that increased communication piece about fluency, here's where your student is in fluency, here are some links that will help, here's the videos, here's the question sets. You can now extend that student's day, and most parents, if they know what it is that John's supposed to be learning, where they are, and see a path to get them there, your ability to assist is greatly enhanced. Will it still be unequal from family to family? Yes. But will it cause a great increase in parental involvement? In, you know, probably K through sixth education, and for some students more so? Yeah. I mean, the number of parents that I've spoken to in the last five years who say, "I'd love to help my kid, right? I've got a degree in math, but teaching this stuff to them is, I don't get." The resources are here, and the parent can have access to it sitting right next to the child. And that's a huge game changer.
Now, what about, could you use it for, like, ELOs for stuff that we don't offer? Like, I know our computer science stuff, for example, is lacking.
Some school-
I just read today how software engineers were the number-one future career by business. And I think number two is like computer analysts.
Yeah, we have no courses. There's some school districts that require a student to take and pass an online course to graduate from their high school. And interestingly, as the amount of money funded by the state government in New Hampshire, it isn't actually decreasing. It's pretty much flat. But as the general population is decreasing, they have a smaller number of students to push that money to, and the funding isn't changing. But they're reapportioning a lot of what isn't now going out to public schools to V-Lax, which is why V-Lax courses are free to any kid in New Hampshire. Homeschool, public school, doesn't matter. So, we literally can have students take additional credits at no cost to us. Now, there is one requirement, and that is if you use V-Lax to meet a required course component. So, let's say we decided not to have any business courses. Now, I don't let Mr. Bransley hear that because I know he's become a very popular teacher here in less than a year. But we're only required to offer three business courses, and we can have kids sign up. If we're meeting our requirement that way, then we have to offer the class, the technology, and supervision. So, there's a cost to that. But if somebody wants to take marketing two, and we only offer marketing one, go for it. They go up to guidance, say, "Sign up. It's your responsibility." You know, you can have varying levels of support for that. Now, interestingly, in the first couple of years, the most commonly occurring grade in V-Lax was an A. The next most commonly occurring grade was an F. If you think of the two groups of students who are interested in taking online courses, kids who wanna accelerate their program, who are very talented, and kids who need to remediate their program and catch up. So, you have the very successful and the very unsuccessful. And V-Lax is only compensated when students are successful. If a kid drops out halfway through, they only get half their money. So, there's a motivation there to keep kids involved and have them be successful. MOOCs, massive online open courses, if you're not familiar with them, are very interesting phenomena that's relatively new. Universities, quality universities, putting their curriculum online for free and getting instructors for free. You just don't get any certificate, don't get any credit. Some universities have decided that they're going to allow you to take the MIT courses online, for example, and then you transfer in their grade, and they'll give you the transfer equivalent. So, you've gotten, you've gotten not only the learning now for free, but now you've got the credit for free. And the industry's trying to figure out what to do with that. So, if I hit here, I go to the University of Virginia and look at their MOOCs that I can just go in and sign up and register to take for free. Go to greatness. Global history since 1760, age of Jefferson, upcoming courses. Sign up, take it, learn, all of it. Now... In the next slide, we'll consider some of the problems with that at this point in time. But midway down here, well, at the top, you look at, last fall, 160,000 students in 190 countries enrolled in an artificial intelligence course taught at Stanford. 200 people also registered on campus as full-fledged Stanford students. Only 30 kids showed up to the classes. After a few weeks, they just started going to the online tutorials. Now, of the 160,000 kids, only a small percentage finished. If you look at the middle piece, Stanford offered two other MOOCs last semester, machine learning. 104,000 kids registered, well, I say kids, and 13,000 completed the course. That's not a great percentage.
Better than 10, but...
Well, here's the other thing. I read another article about MOOC from a high-quality institution, and it was a programming course. It was a really advanced course. And one student who got an A and a perfect score in the final exam took the exam in three minutes. The exam should've taken over an hour to take. But because it's not registered students, you can just sign up as an individual. There's no control. The verification issue is a significant one. So, her hypothesis was that somebody had multiple entities in which they were taking the course at and had gone through and taken the exam multiple times to get all the right answers, and then just gone in and done three and done. So, you know, what do you do with that as a verification issue? But, again, that is the sorts of things that are available in terms of extending for our brightest learners. So, what will this look like? What will be different about the teacher's role? What will be different about the student role? One of the things that this offers is tremendous ability to own your own learning. How will curriculum differ? How will instruction differ? What about grading? What about recording? It's a lot of work. It's a big transition. But if you do it well, it can make a huge difference. I'm gonna show you this last little clip, the first three minutes of it, and then we'll get into some of the logistics and what would the plan look like to get us from here to there.
So, are the teachers that are part of this plan and this development that, so we speak right now, that are part of this?
I shared this presentation with the high school folks last Tuesday because the One-to-One plan is built at high school, and I wanted them to know what you folks were going to be seeing.
Just, you can pull the door closed, too. That way-
So, without any further ado, what was their feedback? And what was their feedback at the high school when you shared it with them?
Some very, some folks were very excited about the possibilities. Some who were very low-tech were wondering what it would mean for them. Which is why you really need a long-term plan that gives real-time PD. And we'll talk about that in about three and a half minutes. This is in Oxford. And it's a shameless Microsoft app, but at least it gives you the platform idea. This is an algebra class. Intersection of two straight lines. And now I can read that from the classroom. OneNote will import almost anything very easily. So, there's a book. They already have the copyright to it with the questions. Scan it as a PDF. Use your stylus. Highlight anything you want. Capture it. Drop it into OneNote, push it up to the kids, done. Make your work great on it. AyoGever is a free download. It's so simple, even I was creating graphs the first time I used it.
That fast?
No, I did-
It took 45 seconds.
And a Y-intercept is one. Nice, simple, straight linear function. But if you can do one, and then again, screen capture. Done. Pop it in, and then you can resize it. You can label it in there. You can do whatever you want with it.
We wish them titles.
And the rest is just shameless Microsoft stuff. One of the nice things about OneNote is there's a, you know, when you were listening to that first presentation, you'd actually, if you followed the cursor, she was actually making the changes and creating that stuff. So, if you need more space to put something, you just create the space. It's unlimited space in either direction across there. So, that's the vision piece. There are some pieces, as I said earlier, the more you're tied to specific software, the more you're tied to a more expensive platform. The more you can push it into the student information system, you know, then what happens if you can fund something that is a laptop, but not everybody may have a tablet? Well, then it becomes really important that teachers have a tablet with digital link capability because grading on a typewriter is horrible. But being able to have kids send you a Word document, drop it in a OneNote, annotate it, is like grading on paper. So, you know, we have a while to look at what we're gonna do and make some decisions about platforms. So, here is my recommendation, grades nine, 10, 11, and 12. So here is my recommendation. Grades nine, 10, 11, and 12. This over here, just a number of tablets or laptops that we would have on any point in time. This year, identify the SIS vendor. We would start cutting over to the new vendor probably November, December, January, February of next year. Schedule on the new SIS and be up and running with it and grading in it a year from September. During that time, we'd be, we, next year also be doing a PDF on the SIS implementation, the grade book, how to use it, looking at grading reporting. The middle school would like to look at its grading and reporting structures. Because I think the high schools had a better place than the middle and elementary, and better than most high schools as well in terms of their grading practices. But in many cases, if you have a 78, that could mean at one extreme, you know, your child is brilliant, but a pain in the button doesn't do their homework. Or 78 could mean you're really struggling with this, where you work hard, and you're a nice kid, you're not a problem in my class. How does a parent know when they're looking at 78 as opposed to a standard-based grading? You really have to move everything except, the grade itself should reflect only the student's progress towards meeting the class goals. Parents and kids need to know that, so they know where they are. And when you just give an undifferentiated grade that includes stuff that are academically oriented and things that are behavior-oriented and things like attendance, then you get further and further away from actually knowing where that child is. So if you look at this, you know, I've said before that if you look at Common Core, we just took kids who are in one trajectory like this, and then threw them from that trajectory to this trajectory all at once. So if you're going into grade one next year, no difference. You're basically starting, you're getting a different curriculum once to accelerate a little bit, but you're not starting behind. If you're in the middle of grade eight, you spent seven years on one trajectory, and now you're making a jump across. It's almost equivalent to two years of instruction. So planning how to make that transition is difficult. What you do in a perfect world is you would make the Common Core transition in 13 years. You would take next year's grade ones, and they would go through and take 13 years to get there, and the others would continue on the old trajectory. In this case, you're looking at a five-year step scale. So in this case, in 1516, a year from this September, the incoming freshman class would be able to register for the classes and opt, yes, I want algebra or geometry honors A or C for computer capable. So you're going to basically create laptop sections of classes that are pure laptop. Because we have teachers who really are working hard and trying to get more technology use into their classes. But you just go home and watch this video. And a third of the class comes in, and then says, "I couldn't see the video. I didn't have my computer. I didn't have access to it." Right? And because it's not an absolute, the teachers get frustrated because it really doesn't work the way that it should. So if you have five sections of freshmen coming in, and in your math class, you've got 60 kids who say, "Yes, here's my technology that meets your requirements." It may not be a Windows tablet or whatever else, but at least it's a laptop, and you can download OneNote for free. Now you've got something the teachers can work with. And it gives them a reason, years four, to start putting the resources together, finding websites, learning how to teach using this technology. And that one group starts to become your expert group, and that's to become, you know, your social studies, science, math, and English teachers, who are your freshman teachers. Then, so if you take this group, right, this is this year's grade sevens. Grade eight, they would be in this year, they would be in high school with that pilot. This year's grade sixes, on the other hand, would be freshmen 16, 17. The freshman teachers have had a year working with the technology, not with the full-blown standardized student device, but with something that's relatively similar. Then you walk in and a student gets advice. We just give it to them as freshmen, tell them you got it for four years. Now, Mr. Miller brought up a very interesting point. A lot of people do this in some sort of rent-at-home. Number one, if they're paying for it, they take better care of it. And number two, there's a cost piece. So if you look at it, this group would be a pilot group all the way through. So if they had laptops, they would become a pilot with the freshman teachers, a pilot with the sophomore teachers, and so on. But quite honestly, by the time you get up here, most of your sophomore teachers have already probably used this in prior years. By the time you get to the senior year, we might have one teacher who teaches only seniors. So really, it's a three-year to get us to have a teacher who now has done it in a pilot, and at least 15 teachers who have tied with the students having a pipeline. It's a slow, phased-in approach. There are advantages and disadvantages in that. One of them is it takes a long time. The other is, this group is not as lucky as this group. And you just have to accept that as a way of doing business. One of the advantages is it automatically builds in a level of cost of ownership. Because starting here, you're just buying this group laptop, and this group, and this group, and this group. You're not buying 427 laptops. And then four years later, going three years without buying any, and then going out and spending another, you know, $280,000 in a one-year shot to fund this thing. So what are some of the costs? Well, right now, we have a director, and we have an employee who does mostly very routine things. We don't have anybody who does server stuff. We don't have anybody who does backup house stuff in the student information system. By the time we get ramped up to do this the way that we would like, we will need somebody, a third tech position in there. Quite honestly, I don't know of any other districts our size who have only two tech folks. I talked to Brian Blake from Sandbourne. They have four schools that are a little bigger than us. They have his record, they have a position like we have, and they have two people in there. It is going to be a cost of doing business if we want to do something robust like this. Somewhere between now and the full implementation, if we have the current student enrollment situation, will we be able to, you know, have a RIF somewhere that would cover this? Yes. I've costed it out without the RIF. The cost of the student information system, by the way, is going to be able to $12,000 saving and give us better service. Why we've been with them, I don't know. But the cost to cut over is going to be probably over $50,000. They have to create the reports, the custom reports for us. They have to pull the data through in several pieces. They have to pull all the historical student data, then they have to check it, then they have to make the changes. And this is something you don't want to do every three years. This is something you want to do to make a decision and change like this, you know, no more often than once every 10, 12 years. We do have, at this point in time, $101,288 saved up from four years of E-rate monies, knowing that it's going to cost money to move across. At the end of this year, if we just are using it to identify the vendor, then there's no cost. We'd finish the year with that balance. And then we would also accumulate another $25,000 in E-rate monies that would come to us early fall. So we're now at $125,000 plus annual savings of that. Now we're $135,000. The transition will cost us about $50,000. And if we added a third technology position at a salary of $50,000 plus 21.81% for like Medicare and retirement system, that brings it up to an annual salary of about $61,000 plus any healthcare. But it's a position that's going to be necessary. So if that person started in December 1, 15, that's the amount of salary benefits, healthcare not included. Right? So you're down to just under $60,000 in that year. The next year, you add in the $25,000 saving, or the $25,000 in E-rate, the prior balance, the $12,000 in saving, subtract the salary, and you're down to $33,000. Remember, healthcare is still not in here. So the first two years of this, there's no net cost to the district. So it gives them some time staffing-wise. Right now, we have a large junior class this year. No, large, we have a large grade A class, and if we look at those enrollment, a large sophomore class. So for two years, we will have, next year, we'll be back up to the numbers in high school that we were last year, about 474. And then we'll be about the same the next year. When the first group ages out, we know with a fair amount of certainty what the numbers are going to be because those kids are all in the pipeline. So unless we get a tremendous amount of development, that means that in this school year, the first year that the district general fund would have to start paying for this third position, we're going to graduate that first big class of 145 kids. And what's coming in behind it is a class of about 100. And then this year's grades graduate over the vote here. And that's a group of...
You can use E-rate to pay salaries?
You can do, you can use E-rate one of two ways. You can take it as a discount, or you can take it as a rebate. It takes longer to get it, but you can use, as long as it's used towards supporting technology education, own it. Now, how you accumulate it, it's very specific about what the E-rate can be rebated on. And most of it has to do with connectivity. But what it can be used for is a much broader piece, and it can be used to fund salaries. Now, there's also going to be an infrastructure cost in terms of more connectivity. But once you have the servers and that stuff, and that, we're in pretty good shape with that in, then pushing out more, what word am I looking for?
Laptops. Clients?
No, the points.
Oh, access points.
Access points. That's relatively cheap. So this is the skeleton of a plan that gives a concept. If you look at the cost of student computing, here's a sort of model. So in 1617, we have 110 freshmen coming in, let's say, if the devices are $700 apiece, that's a cost of $77,000. Well, if every student were charged $100 rental fee a year, and a dollar to purchase at the end of their four years, we would collect, you know, 110 times that, $11,000, and the actual cost would be $66,000. The next year, the same thing happens. Right? Again, it's going to cost us $77,000 for purchase, but now we're charging $100 to 220 students. So the net cost actually dropped by $11,000. By the time you're rolled into your fourth year, a $700 device, right, would be offset by $400 in revenue, and you're down to $300 a kid for your freshman class. If your price point is $500 for the machine, by the time you're into the full scale, $11,000 a year to provide every student, every freshman with a device. So you can see the advantage of having a more robust student information system and not have to have a high-end tablet. It's not easy. And most places that have done laptop implementations, it's been pretty simple. They back a truck up, they unload the laptops, you know, they give them to the teachers, they give them to the kids, and they say, "Now, go learn better. Go teach better." And I would say conservative estimates are that in general, education is horrible at implementations. 90%, according to Marzano, are pretty much failures because nobody does a deep implementation and does it well and plans it out. And the estimates are the computer implementation is probably lower than the education average, quite honestly. What's the best predictor of whether or not something you're doing makes a difference is not, is actually the depth of implementation. How long have you spent doing it? And quite honestly, too much in education, we have too many priorities. If you have more than seven priorities in a school at one point in time, you probably have none. I did, in schools that I worked with before, an initiative mapping exercise. And how many initiatives do you have going on? Well, we've got one on this, we're doing this, and then 33. 33 new initiatives on top of the stuff that they were already doing. Now, however, are they doing anything? And to what extent does it make sense that the 33rd thing that you're adding is going to make more difference than taking that time and effort and energy and resources and putting on the thing you thought was the most important thing to do? So you know, you either do this well, or it's probably not worth doing. One of the nice things about this, I think, is that to some extent, you can buy into this at different levels. If you just want to build the infrastructure and go with that pilot model and say, "We're going to bring your own device school," and the kids bring them in, and you're going to download OneNote, and we're going to support the student information system, that's not very expensive. Given our annual year-to-year budget, once you get into this, this works. But coming up with 60 extra thousand dollars to hand somebody a tablet may be something that the budget committee may or may not want to do. So if you're, if you have something that's scalable and that you can have different trajectories, I think you're maximizing your chances for success. So that's one of the other advantages of that slow, you know, multi-year implementation. If you've got a default budget and said, "We can't do it this year," then you can wait another year and build. But quite honestly, if you, once you started this with a group, it becomes part of your default budget. If it's a plan to roll it out like this.
Once you get it passed.
Once you get it passed. We clearly need a new student information system.
I don't know if it's going to be such a hard, hard issue to get through the process. I think that for the most part, they seem to be receptive to those types of, I mean, I think they, most of them understand that's the direction. So I don't think, I agree. Every year's different with budget committees, so, but I think that it's one of those things that, you know, we have to get off the bus sooner than later.
I think that if it's done well, and teachers are supported, and have a system that they know will work, they'll be advancing. For some people, they will do this. Some people are already there. They're using multiple platforms. We have teachers who are using Schoolly. We have teachers who are using Edmodo. We have teachers using, right? And so it'll be great for them because instead of having to take the attendance on this and put their grades in on this, right, and then put the students over here in Edmodo, just be able to log in, and it'll be seamless. For others, this is going to be a serious challenge because they only know the way they've ever taught. They may have taught the exact same way for 25 years. And, you know, it'll be difficult. So we have to give support. We have to move forward. This will take a lot of rethinking of what teaching and learning is about and who owns what. And there will be a lot of opportunity to have some really good conversations about grading, about competencies, about other things. And if people are ready for them, then it can be really helpful. But it's a lot of shift. It also means that we have to not be doing other things that are less important over the next four to five years and focus on doing this well. Doesn't mean we can't do anything else, but it means that anything that detracts from the time and effort that people need to do this, detracts from that, them understanding how to use this well.
So how do the cost of textbooks factor into this?
I haven't. And I haven't factored in the savings that we would have, for example, on photocopying, which may be significant. And Frank can attest to that, given that we're looking at overages right now. So my estimates are pretty conservative in the sense that I'm only, in this piece, I'm only counting what's relatively known. There should be, over time, significant savings for textbooks. There should be, over time, significant savings for photocopying. There could be, over time, significant savings for kids taking, having the access now to do online courses that are free.
I know when we looked at, it was probably five-plus years ago, we looked at getting digital copies of the textbooks, and there was very little, if any, savings. And then when you factored in the fact, the next year, you couldn't repurpose that textbook from Joe to Jane, it rapidly became... from Joe to Jane, it rapidly became prohibitively expensive to do digital versions of the textbooks. Now, it makes sense in some college courses, because you may use the same book three times, and then the student decides they want to keep it, they just keep the digital copy. But there's generally two models out there. One is, we buy, we go to somebody who provides the technology loaded already, and it's very expensive. Or we invest in teachers who are going to develop that technology, and we pay them like we pay them in curriculum work. And it takes a longer period of time, but the cost savings are quite significant over time. And it also, it's excellent, PD to write curriculum with that depth, which is one of the reasons why it's kind of a, you either make it a big thing or not. So that's the vision. As I say, the vision itself, I think, is platform agnostic. You, somebody wanted to, they can do this on, what company called? The SIS is all web-based. You know, I committed the ultimate sin. I have OneNote on my iPhone. Free download. So the cross-platform piece can- That probably voids your warranty, you know? You've lost your product on an Apple platform.
It probably triggers a self-respect. It's a lot to take in. I was surprised, you know, I mean, there's some very good question asked by the high school teachers. And we also shared this with the SIS committee, and, you know, one of the people said, "I'm not really big on technology, but what if we get the platform wrong?" It's a great question. Which is why, on the student information system-
It's when your IT director starts sweating. It's when your IT director starts sweating.
Well, it's, it's, I mean, the comment was, "How are we going to sit here and make up a plan, saying what type of technology are we going to be using in five years?" We don't know what's going on. Now, Mr. Barak has told me he's still going to be working in this industry and making money on it, because it's going to be web-based. And that may be the thing. So you have to know where the industry is headed. But I could see us being in the third year of this, and then saying, "You know what? We're going to move to a different device for students." You know, some of the other options, would it be better to start in middle school? Middle school kids will embrace this so, that it isn't fine. But middle school teachers are not always as open to change as others. Some are, some are not. And the other thing becomes, if you build this middle school and they love it, and they come up to a high school that has virtually no technology, boy, are you going to have an upset for your kids. So that's why, I mean, you can make a great argument for this, it's six, seven, and eight being the place to do this and develop these kids, because their brains are literally forming around using technology this way for them. But then if they go to grade nine, then they have to power down. My bottom.
Oddly enough, today, Microsoft OneNote jumped to the top of the free application chart on Apple's Max App Store shortly after its launch. Free for home and school use. It's an editor's choice. Did you download it yet?
Use that for note.
You should be using OneNote apparently.
We do have some time. I had originally done a timeline with us doing the student information selection between now and June, and on the new student information system for September. But quite honestly, that didn't give us any margin of error, because it's a four-month process for cutover. If we had gotten any of those warrant articles passed, that was going to be maxed out anyway. And we would have to be training a lot of teachers very quickly. And it's really important to get people on side. And we want to make sure that we got the right student information system, because that's the platform, though thank you, that everything else runs from. So. Where are we on with that?
I'm trying to figure out how to not be blinded.
So the plan is to pilot a year from September, basically?
You could do a bring-your-own-device pilot right now.
What about with SIS, though?
For this, for this September, for example. And just do it through Office 365, and then the new student information system. But you'd be doing it on a very ad hoc basis.
Yeah, I think you want to be powerful to go well.
So for example, Nate Cooper and Mr. Keefe are, Mr. Cooper's a pretty high-technology user. Is there some advantage next year to try and develop people who have more expertise? Yes, but-
Yeah, I think, I think you want to, with Derek, I think you want to have a structure, a structured pilot with, you know, clear goals, you can measure, you get halfway through the year, whatever point you're going to measure, and you can definitively or objectively say, "It's working. Here's what's not working, and here's what we're going to change." If we do an ad hoc one, I think you'll end up with getting mixed messages, because somebody will just be utterly disappointed, because we expected them to know stuff they don't know.
And, you know, the bottom line is, you may not get it right, but we won't do as bad as LA. We won't cost this town a little bit of a billion dollars. We'll do much better than that.
I want to know how many they didn't get back, after they gave them out.
Billion dollars worth?
No, no, they bought them, handed them out, and then said, "Ooh, bad idea." And then they asked for them back? I want to know how many they didn't get back.
The answer in some neighborhoods was, "Come and get it."
Yeah, and that's where it sits. On to new business, staff renewals.
Isn't that non-public?
Yeah.
No. It will be when we consider them.
Okay.
But I'm assuming we want to talk about the plan, or the methodology, or?
No, it was on there, and then-
We're not going to talk about it.
Michelle was going to, literally to delete it.
Okay.
Well, I didn't know if you wanted to talk about the general process for the board member. I think she's a-
In non-public with the documents.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything to say about the operating budget update, other than what we've already said?
Sure.
Look, we're making up time left and right. The school board meeting calendar?
I think we can move to the night.
That's the same as what we just looked at, just beautiful.
No, that was the school district calendar.
Right, but they had the board meetings on it.
No.
No.
No. I think we can just move that to the night.
Okay.
And we've already talked about graduation day.
Yep. For those that weren't listening, that tuned in late for some reason, it's the 13th at 6:00 PM.
Unless we have multiple snow days. And then we might have to, then we might be able to keep it there and just ask for an extension.
Then you're going to need a Kevlar suit. If it was snow days.
There's a lot of tents being rented around town.
So with the election of the new clerk, I had actually sent Derek and Dr. Cochran an email just to have the information available for the board, because we've kind of always had a de facto clerk who had an agreement or worked out agreements with Michelle and other various people as to who would do what, just to review what the clerk does. I don't necessarily want to walk all the way through them. I just wanted everybody to have an understanding of what we expect the clerk to do. So we don't run afoul and not do something we're supposed to do.
The easiest thing to confuse, if I can editorialize a little bit, is that the RSA 19720, plus a few others, deals with district meetings, not school board meetings. And I asked both Gordon and, Michelle asked Gordon an email, and I was in a phone conversation with Mike Elwell on something else, and both confirmed that the clerk's position has to do with the functions like tonight, swearing in of new board members, and everything else is vote deliberative in the election. And in terms of preparing the district ballot, prepares the ballot, the ballot goes to the board, the board approves. So, I mean, it's basically the processes that we've been doing. Michelle does all the work that she does, and has been doing, you know, some of the work of, if not most of the work of the existing clerk, who basically signs off and agrees that, yes, that's correct. So the new clerk would be coming in and performing those functions around the deliberative session.
Actually, I don't believe the board approves of the ballot. The ballot, after deliberative is-
We approve the warrant article, and then they get put on the ballot.
Yes, once it, once it's out of, once it's deliberative, once we're deliberative, the ballot becomes responsibility of the moderator and the clerk, I believe, that we're, we have no responsibility of-
At least, someone should review it.
I've shown it to the board in the past, is just to have that extra set of eyes. And then Lynn Badley, who used to be the clerk, would sign off on it with more focus.
Does this mean you don't have to take the notes up to the board?
I'm not there. I'm home. Here without my pleasant company for the whole day.
Should be interesting notes.
Should be very interesting notes.
And there is a series of questions. That went to the attorney that came back with the answers.
I was going to go up and speak. He's taking notes.
Well, legally, he can. But it doesn't provide for an accurate record, so.
I guess you use the tape.
Yeah, I suppose.
Third person. Mr. Garrett said.
So unless there's questions, it was just for board information, so we knew exactly what was going on.
I actually do have a question. Is a paid position, correct?
I think it's $200.
So was the non-clerk, over the past few years, collecting that amount of money?
You mean me?
Yeah.
The district clerk got a portion of it, and I, it was overtime for me for the year. It was allocated to the overtime account.
So I think it's, yes, the clerk was getting paid.
Clerk was still getting paid.
Who swears in the clerk?
I-
Voters.
No, you do?
A notary, a notary, sorry, a notary, so.
Janine got sworn in by Jason, and I was just, okay, so Jason clearly had to get sworn in by somebody before the meeting. I didn't know if the old clerk could still do it, or how that worked. Any questions on the manifest that Frank took away?
What manifest?
The big honk and stack of papers.
It was a layfire of three hours.
Oh. You better hope it gets signed before the three hours run out.
I had three signatures, off and away.
So we need to go into non-public session under RSA 91-A colon 3, Roman numeral 2, A through C. A, the dismissal, promotion, or compensation of any public employee of the disciplining of such employee, or the investigation of any charges against him unless the employee affected one, has a right to the meeting. And two, request that the meeting be open, in which case the request shall be granted. B, the hiring of any person as a public employee. And C, matters which, if discussed in public, would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of the body or agency itself, unless such person requests an open meeting.
Second.
Eric?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Non-public at 10:18.